Thank you very much. Also, the latest version of Zoom. If you need some help with that, please email the Select Board office and we'd be happy to help. Thank you. If everyone could join the board for the Pledge of Allegiance, please. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to your citizens, one nation, under God, indivisible, universal, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you very much. Again, good evening. And my name's Melinda Collins, Chair of the Select Board. And tonight's hearing regarding the application for a change of category related to the Fruit Center Inc.'s liquor license, which is governed by Mass. General Law Chapter 138, the Liquor Control Act. Specifically, the application requests an amendment to the existing wine and malt license that it has currently and in order to sell ready-made drinks, cocktails, in its retail store. And this would be an all-alcohol license then. Again, with me this evening are Katie Conlon, Vice Chair, Arthur Doyle Clerk, and members Richard Wells and Michael Zulis, Town Administrator Michael Dennehy, Executive Administrator Assistant Hillary Wade, Licensing and Benefits Specialist Jennifer McCullough. And thank you for your work on this, Ms. McCullough, and Milton Cable Access TV as well. And with us also are Mr. Michael Magnosa, who's Corporate Principal for the Fruit Center Inc. and Legal Counsel for the Fruit Center, Mr. Michael Modestino. And if I've pronounced your name incorrectly, please correct me.
You did fine.
Oh, great. Thank you very much. So the hearing will proceed as follows. The applicant will make a presentation. We'll have a public comment period and then a board discussion and deliberation. At that time, we'll decide whether to continue or to close the hearing. If the hearing's closed, we'll then proceed to a vote. Before we proceed any farther, do either panelists or attendees have a process or a timing question related to the hearing? I just want to take a look at the participants and see if anybody has a question. So Hillary, I see you have a question.
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. I just don't have Mr. Magnosa in the panelists. And if he is in the attendees, I wanted to give him this opportunity to raise his hand so I can find him and get us.
Oh, thank you. There he is. Yes.
That's all I have. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you very much. I appreciate that. And let me just make sure no one else has raised their hand. Thank you very much and welcome. At this time, the board would be happy to see or hear your presentation. I'm not sure if you have an actual presentation to show us or not.
Briefly, if I may, Madam Chairperson and members of the Select Board, my name is Michael Modestino. And I'm an attorney in Braintree. And I represent the Fruit Center Inc. I have represented them for a number of years. The purpose of the application obviously is to change the license classification. My clients have had this license, wine and malt license since 2004. And it has been a part of their business since then. Not a substantial part, but certainly a part of their business in order to satisfy the needs of the customers. And what has become apparent to Michael Magnosa, the manager of that facility, Milton Marketplace, is that customers seem to want to have or purchase ready-to-drink beverages. And it seems to be something that happens more frequently as the weather gets warmer. And my client would like to accommodate his customers and try to provide these type of drinks. Obviously, it would require a full alcohol license. It is not my client's intent to sell bottles of vodka or whiskey or anything like that. They don't have the room for it and not that they want to do that. They just would like to have this type of business in order to satisfy the customers out there and a need that seems to be out there. I did submit on my client's behalf a letter that indicates the reasons that they're doing this. So I don't need to repeat all of that. And there's some articles from the New York Times and other publications about these type of ready-to-drink beverages. You know, they're often gluten-free, they're often low-calorieed, and very often the alcohol content is only 4% to 9% alcohol, which is, you know, pretty much the same as what they're selling with the beer and wine at this particular point in time. They don't want to expand the footprint of the liquor sales area. They would, if permitted, they would have the sale of this product in the same general area that the beer and wine is located without expanding that area. Michael Magnosa is present. I think most of the members of the board are familiar with Mr. Magnosa and the store itself. And I would ask Michael to make some comments as well as to what he feels is the need for this particular license at this time.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Hello, Mr. Magnosa.
Hello, everyone. Thank you for your time. So obviously, there's not really a need. There's never really a need for something like this. This is more of a desire. You know, and as was stated in the letter that Mike had sent you last week, it's just that this ready-to-drink beverage category is kind of an exploding category and certainly in high demand. And it's a segment that we'd really like to carry and really like to satisfy the desires of our customers. But no way are we looking to sell liquor. And I had reached out to Richard last year about how we might be able to go about this. You know, we're not looking, you know, without, we really didn't want to change the license. But in order to carry anything with liquor in it, obviously, we have to have a license change. But we're really just targeting a small category within, you know, the liquor license, which is that ready-to-drink beverage category, which, when you break down the numbers, actually, most of these drinks have lower alcohol content than many of the wines that we currently sell. And typically, and in the past, you've restricted our license, which certainly I expected that you might want to restrict our license this time around as well. And I don't know how that would happen or what we would do. But we're just trying to figure out a way to carry this one small segment, you know, within a category.
Thank you, Mr. Magnosa. Before I open it to public comment, do members have anything that they'd like clarified before we begin? Mr. Zulis?
Just one question, maybe for Mr. Modestino and Mr. Magnosa. So the application is for all alcoholic beverages. And so what you're suggesting is that we would somehow limit that to some subset? Do we know how that would happen?
I think my client's intent would be to agree to sell nothing greater than 15% alcohol, to basically restrict the ability to sell vodkas and whiskeys and things of that nature. I'm not really sure how that could be done, but he's willing to stipulate, if permitted and granted this license, to that sort of restriction. Because they really have no intent to sell those other products.
When you put the restriction in the license?
Yes.
Good. Okay. So that's the way you do it, right?
I believe so.
I mean, okay, I guess we need to make sure we know.
Yeah, I mean, the previous license did just that, Mike. I was looking through it. So and I think if we have questions like that and we would like to condition the license, that's something we could continue the hearing for to iron those out.
Yeah, no, I mean, I think, just to put a point on it, we want to, if we're going to have a restriction within a category, that might be a little different than restricting certain areas where you can sell it. So that's what we, I think, need to focus on restricting. How do you restrict a category?
Well, I was reading the previous license and it actually crossed out all. And it just said wine, malt, and cordials. So it's been, it's been done before. Ms. Conlon?
I think that might be a question we should run by Attorney DeLuca, who's our licensing person, because he deals with these liquor license issues for a lot of towns on a pretty regular basis. And we obviously have the ABCC involved here too. So we're going to want to make sure that if there's any restriction we want to put in it, they're going to observe the same restriction and enforce it. So I think that would be a question for Mr. DeLuca.
Mr. Wells?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I have my hand up. I'm going to take. Okay, so my point is to Michael's exactly. Because my understanding, I was away, as you know, for two weeks. So when I got back, I got a litany of emails about this. I think a lot of people think that the applicant is looking to have a full liquor store there. And I actually kind of thought that too from just the response we were getting. But I do believe Mr. Zulis and Ms. Conlon, I think you could restrict any addition, even though it falls under the purview of what would be a full liquor license. I think we could clearly restrict that as much as we see fit. We have the ABCC as precedent for that. But I'll wait till after we hear everything on that. I think time is definitely on our time. We have some time on our side, so thank you.
Thank you. So I, yes, Ms. Conlon?
Madam Chair, I have a question for the applicant before we take. I do want to hear from any residents who may be here. And I know we've had a lot of emails and a petition that we've received. Is this type of ready-to-drink category, is this typically sold in grocery stores, stores like the Fruit Center, Mr. Magnosa? Do your competitors sell this type pretty frequently? Is this something most would sell or is this unusual?
It's a good question. I don't know that I can answer that. I've not seen it in other supermarkets. So I'm really not sure if they're into it quite yet or not.
I ask because I'm not familiar myself, not being a consumer of the ready-to-drink beverage category. So, okay. Well, thank you for that answer, Mr. Magnosa.
Ms. McCullough? Ms. McCullough? Okay, well.
Hi, can you hear me?
Mr. Doyle? Oh, yes, yes.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry.
No, that's okay. Go ahead.
I just wanted to clarify that. I did clarify the labeling of the beverage is different on these ready-to-drink beverages. So if a store were to carry them, they would have to have that all alcohol. So a lot of supermarkets do not carry them or food stores. It would have to be like a Costco or a bigger store like that, a big-box retailer store.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Doyle?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I was curious as to whether or not there had been a demand analysis. I've heard the word interest, but I don't have a sense of magnitude in one direction or another. So that would be appreciated as well.
Yeah, Mr. Magnosa, that was a question that I had. I know that people request things because I've done it. Maybe not this, but, and I was just wondering if you keep a tally so you understand when it becomes a good idea to start carrying something.
Not formally, no. It's a general comment after comment after comment. But nothing formal, nothing written down, nothing recorded. And we also know that this is a category that's up and coming and really growing. And we think it'll be a pretty significant category in the months and years to come.
Thank you. Well, at this time, if members don't have any other clarifying questions, I would like to move to public comment. And first, I'd like to acknowledge that we did receive a petition in opposition with, I believe, 120 signatures and several emails and a phone call. And so I thought it was important to mention that. We do have that. And then to ask if there are people in the attendees who would like to make a comment. Two. Okay, so far, we have two. Dr. Christensen, please go ahead.
Hi, this is Cindy Christensen. I live at 59 Collumore Street and I'm a town meeting member in Precinct 7. I joined the conversation tonight to say that I'm very much in favor of allowing this request. And I ask that the Select Board grant the request to the Fruit Center. We live within walking distance of the Fruit Center. I have no concerns about any kind of problems that might be, that people might fear, given, you know, selling alcoholic beverages. I actually didn't realize it was for this limited amount, this limited type of beverage, and was okay with it even if it had been that they were hoping to sell liquor in the store. I think we all know that the space in the Fruit Center is limited. And I knew, partly because I know and appreciate having the Fruit Center there, that they wouldn't be a regular liquor store. So I was even okay with that. And I ask that you support the Fruit Center in their request.
Thank you very much. And now we have Mr. Mello. Has he joined us yet?
Yes, Madam Chairman. Can you hear me?
Yes, thank you very much.
Yes, good evening, Madam Chairman and members of the board. For the record, Attorney Kenneth S. Mello of Somerset. I represent Stephen Delaney and the East Milton Wine and Spirits Shop, a nearby neighbor, actually, of the Fruit Company. We are here in opposition to the application. And if I may, parenthetically, I'd like to note, Madam Chairman, that there are actually 170 signatures on the petition submitted to the board in opposition. And I would suggest that the test, one of the tests that the board has to make as to whether or not they're going to modify this license is an assessment of public want and the appropriateness of a liquor license at this particular location. And I'd suggest to you that the large response in opposition, as well as some of the other communications you've received, is an indication that there is not a general want, a public want for this. Maybe a few individuals have made some requests, but there's not a general want for this type of license. I'm not certain, quite frankly, as to whether the restrictions that have been proposed would be binding. You're literally granting an all-alcoholic beverage license at this location. And that's exactly what it would be. At some point, I can envision a request to lift that restriction and move on to other beverages. One concern we have is that the diagram submitted is, certainly doesn't conform to the legal standard that one would expect in an application like this. The diagram for showing the location, what we have now is the, before the board, is the current location for the sale of beer and wine. And it's somewhat concerning, Madam Chairman, because of the fact that not only in that area is wine displayed for sale, but it's displayed in other locations throughout the store, including near the cash registers. When one moves to the sale of all-alcoholic beverages, one of the concerns that exists is the security of those items. There are children, minors entering the store, et cetera. And if the alcohol is displayed in the same way the beer and wine is now, that would be a concern as to security, as to a young person getting their hands on the product, et cetera. One thing about your general store, your liquor store that sells all-alcoholic beverages is that they tend to be far more secure. There's somebody at the front monitoring the entire facility. Here, it doesn't seem that that type of surveillance or supervision exists. You know, particularly with respect to beer and wine, where according to the photographs, there are actually hidden areas where beer and wine could be, where the beer and wine is actually displayed right now. And I think it's critical that the board consider the fact that now, regardless of the fact that a diagram was submitted in whatever form it is, and again, I'm going to suggest it's not legally sufficient, but that diagram omits the fact that wine is displayed and offered for sale beyond that particular area. And I'm going to suggest to you that that's not in conformance with the license that the applicant has already. And that raises a concern about the type of sales that will, or type of displays that will exist in the future. Regardless, the move to all-alcoholic beverage is a very substantial move. It moves away from the convenience of the consumer frequenting that store or purchasing at that store to an entirely different realm of controlled substance. And in this regard, we're going to ask the board to deny this petition. There's a store, a conveniently-located liquor store 500 feet away from the Fruit Company. And certainly, if anyone has a desire to procure an all-alcoholic beverage, they can go that 500 feet. It's certainly not an inconvenience. And there are certainly a number of other liquor stores in the area where people can purchase those products. Here you have a supermarket. It may be a boutique type of a supermarket, but nonetheless, a supermarket. And I'm going to suggest to the board that supermarkets in Massachusetts do not sell alcohol. It just doesn't happen as a rule. And I think that the town, and certainly Mr. Delaney believes that the town would be best served by not setting a new precedent here to have supermarkets and other grocery stores selling all-alcoholic beverages. And I thank you very much for your time and consideration.
Thank you, Attorney Mello. Mary Blanchett? You're muted. Now you're unmuted.
Hi, everybody. Good evening. Thank you for recognizing me. I don't know what the product is that you're discussing, but I do have a concern about single-use plastic containers. Having last weekend worked at the Napa River Watershed Association cleanup and seen the vast number of plastic bottles in the marshes, could you tell me if these are plastic containers or not?
Aluminum.
Did you hear that they're aluminum?
They're in cans.
Ms. Blanchett, could you hear Mr. Magnosa? Because he's
No, I can hear you.
He's not that loud. Okay. He said that they're aluminum cans.
Aluminum cans. Okay. And are they single-serve?
They are. They typically come in four-packs and things like that, but they are single-serve, yes.
Yeah. I guess my viewpoint that I just want to put out there is the contribution to environmental degradation and trash with selling. Not that I want people to buy alcohol in large containers, but the single-use container problem with trash. I'd just like you to consider that. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Blanchett. I'd like to give just another moment to make sure there's no one else who'd like to speak. I think we've got it. Thank you. So I'd like to invite further questions and comments from the board. I will note that I also saw that this was a hand-drawn plan that doesn't conform to all of the areas in the store that display alcohol, including those end caps that Attorney Mello referred to. Ms. McCullough went and kindly took pictures for us. And in adding up what the hand-drawn diagram said, it looked like 176.5 square feet in the current. So the current license is for 200 square feet. So I think regardless of what happens, it would be good for us to to continue the conversation about both having an accurate plan and the alcohol being displayed according to the license. Mr. Wells and then Attorney Modestino is, what's his hand raised?
Thank you, Madam Chair. So I did a little bit of history on this, a little bit of homework in the past couple of days. It is true that in most food establishments like Whole Foods, Stoppage, that are licensed under 138, it's beer and wine and these new, I don't know what you, I don't know these brand names, the Trulies and the White Claws. And they're very, yesterday, I took a trip to Ingham, a competitor, which is called Farm Fresh. It's a national chain, but it's very similar to Milton Marketplace to Mr. Magnosa's operation. And I was surprised to find they do have a full liquor license. It wasn't a big display, but they had beers and whiskeys and things of that nature. But the one thing I found that all the ones I went to yesterday, that these, I don't know what you call these, I can't come with Katie. I'm lost for words. I just, I know that when I see them, because they're very eye-catching. They're eye-catching in their displays. They are very popular, especially amongst females, with women, very popular. To all the people that have written to us, I get their concerns. And to the owners of East Milton Liquor Store, I don't think that Mr. Magnosa is looking to do something to compete directly and put them out of business. And I would personally, for one, would not be in favor. And so back to what Mr. Zulis and Ms. Conlon said, I would prefer at this time. I don't know if we can recess this. I would not, not recess it, but continue it. I would not be in a position to want to vote on this tonight. I'd like to do a little more homework, particularly with regard to ABCC restrictions, whatever restrictions we could put on it if we were to amend this. And secondly, to correspondence we got today from Ms. McCullough and to Attorney Bedesto's comments, that maybe we research this. Michael's, Magnosa's permit has been in place a long time. And to my knowledge, the benefit I have, both being as police chief and on this board, I know of no offenses or no security issues that have ever happened there, or complaints. I think that, I think a little more time for us to look at this and give it some thought. I think this is a pretty serious, not serious, but a pretty significant decision we have to make. I'd just be comfortable if we continued this tonight and gave it some more time until our next meeting. So that's just my thoughts. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, I agree. I'm not, I'm not ready. And I think that there's more, there's more work to do to understand this. And I would be in favor of leaving the hearing open. Attorney Modestino?
Just briefly, Madam Chairperson, Attorney Wells made a very good, I'm sorry, Attorney Mello made a good presentation, no question about it. But I have to say this, that, and I agree with Select Board Member Wells, that it should be continued and we should look at this thing in more depth. We should find out if these type of restrictions can be imposed with the ABCC. In terms of the law, I mean, public want, public need is one of the issues. I suggest that there is public want. Maybe we can make a better showing about that. I would also suggest that competition, the case law is very clear. Competition cannot be used as a basis for the denial of an application for a liquor license. And my client is not out to take business away from the East Milton Liquor Store. We don't. Uh, and my client is not out to take business away from the East Milton Liquor Store. We, we don't, they don't want to compete with them at all. I mean, they're, they're just trying to satisfy what they perceive to be the needs of the customers. As far as the security is concerned, and Michael McNose could address it, uh, better than I can, as the chief indicated, they've never had problems with, uh, the sale of beer or wine and, and people trying to steal it. Uh, they have security people, uh, throughout the premises and the parking lot and the store. And, and it's, it's well-covered for security issues. So I, I would agree that I think the matter should be looked at. I think we could give you a better drawing, uh, depicting some of those other areas where, on the way, the exits, where the, uh, registers are. If, if there's some beer and wine on display in those areas, we need to address those areas.
Thank you. Ms. Conlon, you raised your hand, I think.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Um, I, I'm also in favor of continuing the hearing. So I, for a couple of reasons, I'd, I'd like to get the answer from Attorney DeLuca as to how we might go about limiting this, since that seems to be the applicant's desire to create some kind of a carve-out here, so that it's really not all alcoholic beverages. But I think we also have to address the issue that our licensing agent brought to our attention about compliance with the existing conditions. And we need to be sure that the store comes into compliance with the conditions that exist now. Uh, we can, we can always consider whether there should be revision to them. And I think the applicant could come back to us if, if there's a need to expand the geographic location within the store or address any of the other conditions. But I, I'd like to be sure that before we continue, or before the next continued hearing, if that's the will of the board, that we, um, are assured that the store is in compliance with the license conditions as they exist now. And if we're able to, if we continue the hearing, I think it gives us an opportunity to hear from additional residents. So we've heard from a lot of people who are opposed, if there are customers of the Fruit Center who want to make their voice known as to why they're in favor of the store expanding their capacity, I'd like to hear from those residents as well. And perhaps we'll, perhaps we'll get some more information as to what some of the other stores that are comparable to the Fruit Center are doing in this area. It sounds like, from what Mr. McNose has said, not many currently, but that this may be a trend. So I'd, I'd like to know a little bit more about that, because that's not something I'm familiar with generally. So thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Zulus?
Thank you, Madam Chair. So, um, so I, I agree with Katie. Um, what will be helpful to me will be to have Attorney DeLuca here. Uh, while I appreciate the offer of people to do research, what will help me is if Attorney DeLuca, who's an expert in this field, is here. Um, one question, a, a couple of, um, things I'd like to address to Mr. Modestino, and that's, um, as, as I, um, as I captured it, Mr. Mello raised five points. A couple of them you, you addressed. First was the, the public interest, and you said you're gonna, you're gonna address that. The second was, uh, he wasn't sure this restriction would be binding. Not sure if you want to address, there, a restriction would be binding. Not sure if you want to address that now, or maybe address it at a future, future date. Uh, third, you talked about the, the diagram, and he said he didn't know if that was legally sufficient, but you're gonna, you're gonna do something on that. Uh, fourth, again, uh, I think Katie addressed the, the issue about, uh, the potential lack of conformity with the current license. And then his fifth point was, uh, that supermarkets in Massachusetts do not, as a general matter, sell alcohol. So I don't know if you want to address any of those now. And, and I, I apologize to Mr. Mello if I, if I butchered his, uh, his, uh, his points, but that's what I took from what he said. So I don't know if, Mr. Modestino, you want to address any of those points now, or you want to wait till a further hearing?
Well, I could address them briefly. I, I think, I don't know frankly, if it's binding at the A B C C. I think we have to take a hard look at that. And Mr. DeLuca, Attorney DeLuca could help us out. In terms of the diagram, I, I would just say that we were asked by, you know, Jennifer McCullough to give a sketch, a floor plan of where the liquor is sold. Uh, my client threw something together. I, I agree that we could do a better job than, than what was presented. Um, the potential, uh, lack of conformity with the existing license, I think I have to address that. But I, I don't think I can do it now. I need to look into that, uh, somewhat. And I don't know about the supermarkets. I mean, I know I've been into the Big Y and Queen Anne's Corner and Norwell, and it appears to me that they're selling beer and wine and not any alcohol type of products, even these type of, uh, ready-to-drink, uh, cocktails. So I, I think we can address all those issues at a further hearing and, and, and make, uh, a presentation on all of them.
Thank you. And Mr. Zulus, just to let you know, Ms. McCullough did check in with both Mr. DeLuca and the A B C C and was referred to each other by them. So I think what this will require is for the board to, um, uh, start thinking about what kind of conditions we would be interested in, and, and then to have Mr. DeLuca and the A B C C, uh, you know, so he has some specific questions to, to pose for them. Um, that, that's, uh, that's my takeaway from that. Um, so, uh, actually, we haven't continued a hearing, um, or I, I, we haven't done it in a long time. So I'm not sure, I need to
I'll make a motion, Madam Chair. I'll make a motion to continue this hearing until our, I'm going to say for two weeks, I'm telling you, whatever the next scheduled meeting is after next week, so the week of the second
May twelfth?
May twelfth, yeah. So is that all right? Yeah. I'll second.
Thank you. All those in favor, uh, Ms. Conlon?
Yes.
Mr. Doyle?
Yes.
Mr. Wells?
Yes.
Mr. Zulus?
Yes.
Ms. Conlon's, yes. Excellent. Well, thank you, everyone. Um, thank you, Mr. McNose and, um, Attorney Modestino and, um, and, and everyone who, who came and, and spoke this evening and, and people who wrote in. So we really
Thank you. Thank you for your time and consideration.
So the next item is, um, public comment. So I'd like to give people a couple of minutes or a couple of moments, I should say, if anyone would like to speak, public comment. To raise their hand. And I don't see anyone. So, um, we will go on to our next item, which is we've moved to community happenings, uh, up. And we have a guest, Tara Goria from, um, Milton Muslim Neighbors, and to share an announcement with us. Um, good evening and welcome, Ms. Goria. We appreciate your joining us.
Absolutely. Good evening, Madam Chair and members of the Select Board. Uh, thank you for having me. And, and, uh, again, good evening. My name is Tara Goria. And I'm at four thirty-seven Van Adam Street, a member of the town meeting, um, in precinct six. But tonight I come before you as a member and a founder of the Milton Muslim Neighbors. And we are hosting our inaugural Ramadan food drive. And I wanted to share with the community and members of the Select Board of how can the community can participate. And first, I'd like to thank our, um, existing partners. I'd like to thank you for allowing us to be on the community happenings, the Milton Public School System, the Milton Interface Clergy Association, and the Interface Social Services in Quincy that will be distributing the food and the, um, various, uh, goods that are, um, collected. As you may know, Ramadan is a very important month for American Muslims. It's one of our holiest and special, uh, months in that it's not just about fasting from sundown to sunup, but really looking to increase our charitable giving, um, looking to connect with others, sharing the many blessings that we have. We thought, what better way, given the pandemic, that the inability for us to gather together and break bread, why not share the many blessings that we have with those who, uh, need more, um, and may not have as much. So to that end, uh, we have come together with a number of our partners, if, as our inaugural activity, the various Muslim families within Milton to host this Ramadan food drive. I believe Hillary has a flyer that she'll post in a moment. And, um, we are currently have eight sites that are willing to collect food. One, of course, is the Milton Public School. Um, in their school lobbies, if you have a school-aged child who attends one of the public schools, we would love for your participation and your child's participation. It's a wonderful way to connect with their classmates as well. Um, and then we also want to thank First Parish Milton at Friday thirty-five Canton and Cong- congregation Beth Shalom at eighteen Schulman, who will also serve as additional collection sites for those who may not have school-aged children in the Milton Public Schools or have children that have aged out. Um, so again, I encourage folks to participate. It started Monday, April twenty-sixth. Um, we're well on our way. It looks like some of our sites have already bins that are overflowing with the goods, which is very heartening to know with three days in. And I hope that we'll continue the momentum through Monday, May tenth. And Ramadan concludes on May twelfth with Eid celebrations on May thirteenth. So, um, I, for the next week and a half, I hope that we will come together as a community and collect the needed goods, including very, I, I was told by ISS, the Interface Social Services, uh, uh, one of the largest needs in addition to, you know, dry goods and goods that are hard to sort of transport, um, are also goods for young children, like diapers, uh, for the size of age five and six. Some things that sometimes we often don't think of that are, um, expensive to buy and are hard to come by. Um, so just to make a special note, because we have very small, um, and young children who are often in need in addition to the food goods. So, um, on that note, I want to thank everybody for allowing me some moments on your agenda. But most importantly, wanted to sort of encourage the community to come out, um, look us up. We, we have, uh, on Facebook now, we have, are formed together as a formal group, as Milton Muslim Neighbors, and we look forward to continuing, uh, just this inaugural activity, but to do more in the community. And please call on us if there's anything that we can do. So thank you for having us.
Well, thank you so much, Tara. And, and thank you to Milton Muslim Neighbors for welcoming the community into this really important project. Um, it, it's any time that we can give to, uh, others and, and each other, um, and show care is, um, it's a real privilege. So thank you.
Thank you.
Have a good evening.
You too.
Our, um, our next agenda item?
I'm sorry.
Our next agenda item is, um, the Equity and Justice for All Advisory Committee. They're joining us, um, to give us an initial report and to have a conference. And, um, welcome. And thank you so much for joining us. I think we have more members. Welcome, Ms. Ladenmark.
Thank you. Um, thank you very much, Madam Chair. And thanks to the Select Board for inviting us to this meeting to present some of our initial, uh, observations and recommendations. Um, the committee has been working very, uh, hard over the last, uh, six months or so. And, um, we've really, you know, thought about a lot, had a lot of discussions about, um, what could we do in terms of promoting more equity and social justice in Milton? And, um, so we're coming for today just to talk to you about our initial thinking. Uh, we know that we have an additional twelve months to go. So, um, this is very preliminary, but we want to share with you. And also to begin to get some feedback, um, on the, um, on, on where, where we are and to make sure that we are headed in the right direction for all community members. Uh, so Hillary, I believe that you have a presentation that we sent to you. And if you could put that up, we'd appreciate it.
I do. One moment, and please let me know if I'm missing anybody in the panelists. Right? That's what I, I
I haven't looked through, uh, the, and the participants?
Yes.
And I
I think you got it.
We've got quite a few of us. So. And so as you're putting that up, I'm just looking, there were thirteen members. I'm going to just quickly scroll through.
Thank you.
I think you've got most of us. I mean, I may have missed a couple of people. Um, and so, so, um, Hillary, if you could go to the next slide, that would be great. I just wanted to, um, remind the committee about what our charge was. I know you remember that, but just for other people who are listening in, I think it might be helpful. Um, you charged our committee to review town policy procedures and budgets for the purpose of advancing equity and justice for all. And you asked us to report back to you periodically and to make recommendations on the result of our work. This report is, um, the, is our progress to date. So Hillary, next slide. And hopefully, uh, as you can see, most of our committee members are here. There are thirteen of us. And, um, we have been, as I said, working very hard on the last few months. And I'd like to publicly thank the committee members for their dedication. Uh, we really have been meeting, um, every other week since September and sometimes every week. And so a lot of work has been done. And we'll talk a little bit on the next slide, Hillary, um, about like what our process has been. So the committee started with, um, trying to brainstorm, what are the priority topics or issues that impede equity and justice for all, and especially for people of color or of people who are in underrepresented groups. Um, we identified and agreed to look at four main focus areas. And these are the police and fire, housing, school, youth and families, town government and governance. And the committee then created four subcommittees to research in detail these areas and to come up with observations and recommendations for the larger committee's, um, consideration. And as you will start to see tonight, some of the things that we have in terms of our observation. So thanks, Hillary, for putting up the next slide. And that's the right one. Um, initially, um, the subcommittee's recommendation, uh, really what we found is that there is no town-wide commitment to diversity. Um, at best, there's been really episodic efforts primarily in the schools. And also a few proclamations from the Select Board aimed at promoting racial equity and social justice. But there is no town-wide strategies to address diversity, equity and inclusion, whether it's in hiring, vendor diversity or housing. And where they do exist, um, primarily in the public schools, they're not comprehensive and many times not supported with goals. So we've, that was some of our initial findings. Uh, we also found that the town staff doesn't reflect the diversity of its residents. This isn't surprising, but we also found that, um, there are few efforts to change this, or formal efforts. And so as the town has gotten more diverse, it's struggled to engage citizens of color. For example, there are few people of color in town leadership roles, either elected or volunteer. Um, and yesterday's election certainly added a couple more people to that. So we were very pleased to see that. Uh, but that statement still stands. There is even a lack of representation in youth sports and other, you know, town-type activities. And that was very concerning to the committee. The committee also noted that housing patterns show a racially segregated town, which has led to segregation in our elementary schools. Uh, we believe that historical redlining is in part responsible for this and that this residential pattern causes segregated schools up until the middle schools, when all the kids come together. And we think that, that, that is, uh, a, still a concern. There's also a perception of disproportionality in town policies and procedures, especially by people of color. We found these perceptions in areas such as policing with this history of racial profiling, which from the most recent data shows blacks account for, uh, forty-eight percent of the arrests, while they are only fifteen to twenty percent of the town's population. Now, we note that many of, um, these perceptions are anecdotal. However, the town has not provided data to help dispel or counter, um, these, uh, assumptions. We also heard that there is a perception that the town policies, such as overnight parking and ticketing, are more strictly enforced in areas with more residents of color or where, um, there are more renters. And so those are things that, you know, we've heard fairly consistently. So we'll go on to, so that, those were the nature of our reports, for, I mean, of our, our So we'll go on to, so that, those were the nature of our reports, I mean, of our observation. What we did do though, and Hillary, if you can move to the next slide, is that we started to think about, are there things that can be done now that would make, that would hope to promote more equity in the town, or at least the perception of equity? And so, and what could be done in a regular, relatively short time? And we came up with about seven recommendations, and I'm going to go through those now. The first one is that we would like, we recommend that the town create a townwide diversity and inclusion statement. And that statement is, will help to demonstrate the town's commitment to diversity and inclusion, as well as giving it a framework. And we also recommend, of course, that when you do this, that there are very specific goals that are put in there around diversity, hiring and retention, vendor diversity and housing. And so, and we think that this could be done by the select board in a relatively short period. We also recommend that the town, and we are part of this process, review town processes and regulation to ensure equity and enforcement. As I've said, number of folks have felt that the town policies don't actually, are actually enforced equitably across the town. One of the things that we really strongly felt though, is that the town needs to stand up and to actually provide more transparency around town policies and practices. Because as we talked to department heads, we felt that there, that maybe the facts don't support the perception, but that's not what people believe. And so what we thought is that maybe what we could, the town could do is create a diversity, equity and inclusion dashboard, and also to do an annual DEI report out so that people could actually get more clarity around things like traffic stops and things like that. We also recommend that the town process, review processes to recruit a more diverse pool of volunteers for positions. And we think that that could be done via a more active outreach. A number of times we heard that people do not understand what's the process to get on committees or volunteer positions. And we, so we felt that there is a need to actually do, try to go where people are, to their churches, maybe, to civic organizations. The organizations that just talked before us, Milton Muslim Neighbors, could help to bring more people to the fore around a diverse pool of volunteers. And also another piece is that we, we noted in talking to those who are responsible for selecting or appointing volunteer position, that many times they just don't have the network to reach a more diverse population. And so we started thinking about what would be some of the items and where would those people actually get information from? So we think that an outreach program is really important there. We also want to encourage the town to provide more information to encourage residents of color in particular to run for elective offices. In talking to a couple of people who ran for office just yesterday, you know, they were encouraged to run. And I'm sure that that's how most times it happens. And so how do you just kind of get people into that political process where they are, you know, being asked to step up to these types of positions? In addition, once again, we believe that there really is a need for more outreach to ensure that people, that people understand, you know, what are the rules and processes to actually run for office? And that could be done like in multiple ways, as I've said before, either through websites, newspapers, civic organization, et cetera. We were also concerned, but we, about the youth sports league, because we heard numerous times that particularly parents of color had no idea about how to get in touch with or engage with youth sports. And so one piece that we noted is that a lot of these sports leagues operate on town property. And so we do think that because they're on, using town property, that we could ask them to have a formal diversity or outreach policy or an engagement program that is especially, is targeted toward everyone, but particularly targeted toward engaging youth of color. And finally, we thought, we looked at, you know, the idea of formal budgets for diversity, equity and inclusion roles, programs and initiatives. And we noted that even where we, there are programs or positions that have been created to support diversity, equity and inclusion, that many times the budgets are lacking. And we think that if the town puts in a person as, say, for example, in the schools, the senior director of educational equity, that that role needs to not only be funded, but have a budget. And because otherwise it doesn't seem to be able to operate effectively. So those are the, those are our major recommendations. And if we can move to the last slide, Hillary. I wanted to talk a little bit about the next steps of the committee. What the committee, we recognize that we have another year to go and that we don't know a lot. And so there's a lot of information that we're going to have to try to bring to the fore. One thing that we want to investigate is the value of a townwide equity audit. And as you know, the public schools have already engaged in one. We've set up a subcommittee to look at not only what's happening with the audit in the public schools, but also to look at other towns to see how they are approaching this and if that would be a recommendation that this, that Milton would want to make. We also looked at, we're going to be looking at civil service. And many times because civil service, our fire and police department operate within the civil service system, we do recognize that sometimes that limits diversity and equity and inclusion. But we wanted to act, this is a very complex topic, but we want to dive more deeply into that. The state has a commission that is looking at it, that we've been work, trying to understand what they're doing. And of course, other towns are looking at it. So that's one of the areas of work for the future. We are also exploring opportunities to outreach, outreach and engage residents of color for more, to become more involved in town governance. One of the things that we want to see is, you know, what are the best practices that should be instituted? We know that we have some in town because we have seen recently more people stepping up, especially people of color to go to town. But Hillary, you lost my slide, but that's okay.
I'll bring it back one moment.
That's okay. I can, I'm almost done with it anyway. But we want to see the best practices for that. And then what we also would like to see is, we, we want to continue to discuss with opportunities to improve diversity, equity and inclusion with both the town administrators, the town department heads, the town, and also others like the key stakeholders, like the town unions and some of the other committees that are engaged in work. So those are things that we know we have to do. Lastly, we want to outreach more to community residents. And we are looking at putting together a survey that would hopefully get more input from residents. And we're also looking at other opportunities to just more broadly engage. So that concludes the formal presentation and we'd be happy, as well as some of the members of the committee, to answer any questions you may have.
Well, thank you so much, Ms. Lattimore. I knew that you'd been meeting very, very often and I can't thank you enough for everybody's dedication. And I, I, I think you're enjoying each other too, the, the couple of meetings I was able to attend. And so I'm really, really grateful for that because I know it makes doing work together a lot easier. And, and I'm very excited to receive that the, that, what we can do now and, and know what the next steps are. But before I, I go on and monopolize the time together, I would like to ask members if they have questions or would like to make a comment. Oh, Mr. Wells? You're muted.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, Pat. I, as I sit and listen to you tonight, I'm drawing back to, I'm going to say 20 years ago, we were in the Nanjeroni Room at Milton Hospital. Your guest speaker was Sister Lena Devi. Do you remember that night?
I do remember that. Yes, I do.
Am I right 20 years?
At least 20 years.
At least 20 years ago. And I said this when you were pointing to this, to this committee, I'm like, most people don't realize, you've been in the trenches in these efforts for as long as I can remember. So I, I do have a few comments and stuff. I'm just going to email, is it all right if I email you tomorrow, just some things that I want to, okay. All right, that'd be great. All right, thank you. And it was good to see you. Well, thank you for your work. I, I, I thought you'd like that little piece of history tonight, all the way back to that night.
Fond memories.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Ms. Conlon?
Thank you, Madam Chair. And thank you to all of the members of the committee. That was a very good preliminary report and a lot of good ideas that you, that you've brought forward. I had a question just regarding the equity audit and what that might entail, what, what it would be geared toward. Maybe you could just provide a little more detail on what, what you have in mind for that?
Ms. Conlon, at this point, we are looking at that as an option. So I, you know, we're really not at the point where we can give you like a lot more information. As I said, we have a subcommittee of our group that is looking into like, what are other towns doing? And also what are our own public schools doing? And what's the benefit that they're seeing out of an audit like this? We do think that there, you know, there's certainly a hope that there is a great benefit from this. And so we definitely see this as part of the next, you know, 90 to 120 days of our work.
Yeah, can I just comment also, Pat? You know, I was the one really leading this effort and did a great deal of, of research and put together a presentation for the, the committee on this very important initiative. You know, when you step into this work and looking at a whole town and, you know, look at what the school is doing, it kind of silos them where they're really in a context of a greater community that needs to support what the schools are doing. So if it's done, you know, in isolation, it kind of just isolates the school where their children go back to families that are in a community that is not equitable and just and working along those lines to ensure equity. So it, it, it really is hard for them to succeed, given that they are siloed in that effort. So that's why for me, this is a, a chance to take a compass, to build a roadmap so that we know that we're doing this in the, the most equitable and, you know, efficacy based way to practice in the best way that's known at this time to do these kinds of things for towns and municipalities.
Well, thank, thank you for that. And I, I liked your idea about the statement. I thought that might be something that we could do, as you said, on a fairly short-term basis. It may be something we might even want to involve some of the other elected boards and either to weigh in on the statement, give them an opportunity so that way there's broad support for it among the different elected boards. But that would just be one thought. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Doyle?
Good, Madam Chair. Thank you, Ms. Lattimore. I want to just recognize the transparency in your presentation of the hard work that the committee has put in on this very important and not easy matter. Also, the focus is very, very clear and appreciated in the formation of, of recommendations that are in progress. We look forward to the next phases of your work and not only your work, but the work of all of us combined.
Thank you, Mr. Doyle. I mean, one of the pieces is that you're right. This is a, this is a lot of work. I think the committee has really stood up and really wanted to have some very tough discussions. We know that there's a lot of more work to do. It's a long-term process. What we were hoping to accomplish out of the recommendations tonight, as you correctly noted, are some things that are short-term in nature that could just send an indication to the community that we are, we, we are looking and that we as a town are making some level of progress.
Thank you. Would any, Mr. Zulus, did you want to?
Yes. Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, Pat. Thank you, everyone. Three things. First, we have four committees, two new committees and two reappoint, two committee reappointments that we're supposed to make tonight. You know, is there something that we could come up with in short order to make that kind of outreach for a more diverse pool of candidates for those committees? And, and maybe defer those appointments for a couple of weeks? Now, you know, town government needs to keep moving. We need to get them appointment, pointed. I wouldn't want to wait, you know, two months for it, you know? But if we, if we could, if we could get right on it and, and have a, of a plan to, to reach out for these committees, I, I, you know, be my view that we, we could, we could suspend that and try to get right on it and get some, get a more, perhaps a more diverse pool for these committees. So the question is, Pat, are there, are there specific things we can do in the short term to, to do that?
I, I think there are. I think that there are, as we pointed out, some very specific organizations, you know, like many of the churches have large communities of color in them, for example. And so just outreach to them to let them know that the position is available. I happen to, as an example, I happened to have gotten, because I worked in Boston, a letter from the mayor, just kind of listing in some, very specifically, some key volunteer roles. And I, I don't know how my name got on the list and maybe in the organization I work with. But I think that by just letting people know that these opportunities are available more broadly, and also maybe to publish them, like rather is on social media, media in terms of some of the local groups are, that are digital, or to actually even consider some public notices in the paper, just letting people know that, hey, this is the deadlines, because a lot of people just don't.
Yeah, but I, but I would echo that to your, this gracious point that, you know, this committee would be happy to, you know, take the lead in making those connections in short order and looking for the opportunities. If we have a summary of just what are those opportunities, what's the role that we can bring people together around?
So if we come up with a, a list of the, a list of the committees, the description, the, the name, you know, one or two page summary, and we distribute it, you know, through MICA perhaps, and then, and then to you all to get it out, that, that may, that may help, at least in the short term?
I think it will, Mr. Zulus, in the very short term. So I think that one piece is that, you know, every little bit helps. I think that we're in a very good place right now, having, you know, with town meeting happening next week and then also with the election just happened, that people are, you know, energized around participation. They just don't know, many times where to go to. I don't know if anyone else on the committee has any thoughts?
I was just going to point out that, you know, there's a coalition of more than 100 in Milton black and brown families, that a lot of people that are new to Milton, that are of color, join this coalition and it's a great way to become engaged in the community and in, and in building this culture that, you know, you might not even know that exists. But I tell you, I'm so impressed with, you know, the monthly gatherings and the forums that where people are working and now living in Milton, I couldn't be more impressed with this incredible assemblage of professionals that are in this group. It, it really is a great resource for us to tap that very talent and potential.
All right. So, so I think we have a to-do. Maybe Mike, you can help us with that. I mean, well, subject to the board, but, but we'll see, you know, we'll see what the board wants to do, but when we get to the appointments, but I think we have a suggestion anyway.
Yeah.
Two other quick points. One is budget. Two, two other quick points. Uh, one is budget. Uh, do you have any budget requests or needs uh, at this point?
So, at this point, no, um, because we are in the process of, of looking at a community survey. And so, we do think that we're gonna need some budget money to um, help us to, to sort through that, but we're in early days of that. And so far, as I said, the committee's been great. Um, they've utilized their connection. The resources from their companies have been volunteered. And so, we are trying to, you know, do this uh, in a way where it is um, not a cost or at large cost to the, um, to the towns, but uh, we will come back with requests. But thank you for asking that.
And then the final thing is the, the policy. Oh, sorry, I didn't mean to.
No, I'm good.
The, the final thing is the policy, uh, to go back to what Katie mentioned, the policy uh, i- i- I think is a good idea is not to give you more work to do, but is that something that you could, that you all could um, sketch out? Maybe the main points that could, you, you know, or give you thoughts on terms of what the pol-, uh, or is that something we, we don't, we don't, we don't, we don't want to rush? Uh, you know, I just, uh...
Well, we don't want to rush, Mike, not to cut you off, but I think that that is something that we can do, because we're looking at other towns that have done this. And so, we have, we have some examples of that and um, at least for your consideration. Of course, Milton will be unique, but um, in general, you know, these things carry a certain um, very similar, a lot of similarities. So, we could certainly take that on.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wells.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Pat, I do want to share with you one positive that uh, is coming up and, and I, I've shared this with some of the board members, particularly the chair. One of the things that I think, you know, Milton, you know, having grown up here and having worked here now for so many years, um, one of the things that really I've taken as a positive, particularly since COVID, and I, I really took notice of it last year is, uh, my wife is one of many coaches, coaches girls softball here in town, has been for ten years. She's one of many parents who give so much of their time. And you made, you did mention sports thing. I say to people in the summer, you should take a trip up to Pierce Field on any given night. I call, I usually call Mike, Mr. Dennehy, those are Wednesday night under the lights. And really take a snapshot of what this community is looking like today in the twenty-first century. Twice last year on two separate occasions, people not even knowing who I was, just sitting there as a parent. I had parents from other communities who were visiting teams playing Milton sports come to me and, and, and just talk about how, what a, what a reflection of diversity this community was, whether it's on a basketball court, whether it's the boys' baseball, whether it's the girls' softball, whether it's on the soccer, and, and it's really something which for me, it wasn't like this when I was a kid here. A- and I'm not saying that this is like an end up, but it's definitely a, a positive, you know? You don't hear a lot of positives, but everyone on some night this summer should sit in that upper field and just take a look at the future. Because they are our future. Our children are the future of this community. We're in, I'm beyond my, I'm in the, I'm in the, for me, I'm at the end here, like, we're, we're, you know, but they're the future. And, and that's one of the bright spots that I really noticed last year and really take that as a brother, was some really great coaches, some really great athletes. I've caught your uh, your committee member, Mr. Reddick, said a couple of times trying to scout Milton kids over to uh, Milton Academy. Um, but that's one of the win-wins that I see coming here on this committee, and I think that's only a positive for all of us. It's something that we should all build upon, so.
We also see that as a positive, uh, but we do want to make sure, uh, because what we've heard is that a lot of times, uh, especially with town sports, that um, parents of color, there's a lack of information and also a lack of a process. And I'm gonna turn, I see Quincy, I muted himself, so I'm gonna let you speak to that, Quincy, because you were on that subcommittee.
Yeah, and, and so we've done a lot of work there and, and, and I don't, I, I've only been in this town now for six years, so I'm sure, Mr. Wells, it has been dras-, is drastically different now as you watch these fields. But the, the important part of this committee, it's not just about diversity, which is seeing people of different colors and different races and um, different genders, et cetera, uh, on the field. But it's also about equity. And I think that's the lens that we want to bring to this, is when you look at the population of Milton and then you compare that to the youth sports, the equity lens is not there yet. It may be diverse, but it's not ec-, it's not equal. Um, and that's the opportunities that we see to be able to improve as we look forward.
Thank you. Um, Mr. Dennehy?
Sure. Ma- Madam Chair, I, I echo the, the sentiments. I've been great working with this group. We, we worked specifically with a subcommittee group uh, recently about uh, civil service and, and what it means to the public safety departments currently and, and what it could look like in the future. I just want to remind everyone that this board uh, allocated five thousand dollars to this committee to spend for FY twenty-one. On Karen Prouval, who we, who will be next to speak, our finance director, we've been going through uh, the closeout of the FY twenty-one budget. So, I just wanna um, just reiterate to this group that there is a funding source for, for this uh, committee. I- if they're looking to, to tap into that, I can make myself or, or uh, Mike Kelly, who's our chief procurement officer, available if, if those funds are needed uh, very quickly.
Thanks, Mr. Dennehy.
Mike, if, if um, i- if they identify a need now, uh, but aren't quite ready to um, to contract for something, is there um, would, would they be able to encumber the money for next year or?
Yeah, and that's something that, that Karen and myself and Mike Kelly could work through with the group, so.
Okay.
Um, as we went through the select board's budget uh, Monday, uh, Karen identified it, had some questions about it, and then just wanted me to remind this group that, that it is available for, for twenty-one. And if we need to carry it over, then there's some things we can do with that as well.
Right, I just, I just wanted to make sure they understood that. Yes, Mr., Mr. Wells?
It, it might be helpful, Pat, to begin to try to identify a vendor or a dollar amount now as to what she thinks something like this might be. And that, I think that would help us. It definitely would help Karen. Um, if we knew what the dollar amount was, I think that that would probably be a good thing.
A- and so, thank you for that. Uh, one of the things that we are doing right now is that we have a subcommittee that's working on, say, the sub, the survey. And so, we're trying to sort through, how much can we get from our own network uh, in terms of advising council? And then where do we need professional help? Or if we need to do like outreach or something like that, like a, a newspaper uh, ad or something. So, we will definitely pull together with, and our expectation within the next, you know, thirty to sixty days that we will have a budget.
Thank you.
Thank you for the reminder. That's very important.
Okay. Uh, Ms. Conlin?
Madam Chair, just two follow-up points. So, related to that, i- i- if you are able, Pat, to identify something within, say, the next thirty to sixty days, hopefully closer to the thirty than the sixty, because the fiscal year ends on June thirtieth. Um, you know, we could always submit a reserve fund transfer request to the Warren Committee if there's something over five thousand that we would need to consider for, for one of these objectives, on the theory that it was um, you know, unforeseen um, or extraordinary, which I, I think you would, depending on what it is, I, but I, I think probably anything would meet that criteria, since it was not contemplated when the budget was put together over a year ago. Um, and then secondly, I just want to follow up on Mr. Zulus's point. I think it was a good one regarding the committees that are on the agenda for later this evening. There, there's also any number of committees coming up for reappointment over the next few months, and the moderator is gonna be appointing committees in, he didn't be appointing a new warrant committee in July, but he has other committees that he's appointing at different times. And I know that the moderator and previous moderators have really tried to focus on getting a diverse group of people for the committees, including on the Warren Committee. So, I think we should let Mr. Hiss um, know also about the committee's interest in helping diversify some of the committees, and that might be something that the town administrator can help coordinate with, with the Equity and Justice Committee and uh, the moderator.
Thank you.
Thank you for that. Uh, we have met with Mr. Hiss, and so we are definitely going to push that. We also have some recommendations about uh, maybe some slight changes to the volunteer application, for example, um, where um, like right now, the volunteer application is very simple and it does not ask for demographic data at all. So, it's very hard many times to know something uh, and i- i- even in an after-the-fact basis. So, we feel that it would be important for us to start reporting on some of that, um, to say, who actually applied for these roles? And who got selected? And, and so, those are just like simple things we think can be done, um, that would give more transparency to the process. So, thank you for this too. But we appreciate uh, Mr. Dennehy also reaching out.
Um, well, well, thank you. Um, uh, that's uh, the volunteer form is something that myself and Ms. McCullough have wanted to redo, a, a, along with many of the things that you've talked about in your recommendations. Um, a, a lot of them are best practice recommendations from the Mass Municipal Association. And um, I'm, I'm hoping, I, I appreciate, A, the offer to help um, sort of broaden our network to um, to in- include other volunteers, because we have been um, putting things in the newspaper, writing press releases, putting things on social media, but it's just not enough. Um, so the additional ideas, um, but also in the short term, your offer of help is wonderful. Uh, my concern is that in the long term, because um, we don't expect you to, to stay with us forever, even though um, I know we would benefit as a town from having, um, having the committee go on. Um, but uh, but, but I think that for me, a long-term solution, um, and, and some, some ways of, of, of making sure that we reach out um, uh, into the future are, are important. So, um, so I, like Richard, I, I will reach out with my, some of my initial thoughts that I've had on these things. And I, I guess I'm hearing from you that even though these are recommendations for us, you stand ready to assist us in um, with guidance and um, helping us uh, work through process and, and questions, because um, I'd be really interested to hear um, what residents would think about, um, you know, an inclusion statement and what's important to them too.
And, and those are the types of things that we, so, uh, you had a lot in there, um, and we agree with you on that. We are looking at some longer-term thing. The uh, having a town de- uh, diversity, equity and inclusion dashboard, which is one of our recommendations. We think that that is a longer-term solution. It brings an accountability to the town. Uh, an annual report where you actually talk about like what does the town look like from a uh, equity stan-, equity and racial um, standpoint is important. And it does put, starts to build in those muscles that allow for a long-term systemic peace. Very, we think it's a simple thing, but our intent is that it's the beginning of a longer-term thing. We are also um, looking at some more structural changes. Um, we are not ready at this point to do that, but we do think that there are some things that, that a short-term committee like ours cannot accomplish. Um, but that if you have a structure where diversity comes up on a regular basis and talked about, that that would be important.
Oh, thank you very much. Uh, Mr. Doyle? You're muted, Mr. Doyle.
My apologies. I do do that from time to time. I, I just wanted to uh, say that part of this conversation concretizes an experience of the past week. When looking at one of the committees, I did ask about the composition of the candidates. And the response was, as you would suspect, we don't capture that information. Um, that shouldn't be a long-term uh, solution. There must be other communities that have uh, best practices that we can take a look at and incorporate in the immediate term.
Hmm.
Um, so I would, I would hope that we could um, move forward on that very, very quickly.
Thank you. Ms. Conlin?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'm sorry, I have one other question. Is the civil service recommendation, is that something you're continuing to work on and you're gonna be bringing something to us on that? Um, it, yeah, I know there's been a lot of interest in that among the board members and among members of the community, and just wondering what you're thinking in, in terms of timeframe and um, whether that's something you're gonna be focusing on, that you want to bring something to us, or is that something you're asking us to look at at this time?
No, that's something that we um, plan to bring to you at a later date. Um, as we said, we've done a lot of work on this to date. We have a subcommittee that's looking into it in detail. But unfortunately, uh, part of the, you know, it's a very complex um, process. I mean, civil service has a lot of benefits, uh, but it also brings with it some challenges around um, equity and diversity. And so, um, we are trying to understand, one, what are, have other communi- communities done? And, but also at the state level, there's a whole commission looking at it. And so, we, we don't want to, one, jump out in front of some thing that may be, you know, more at a state level. But at the same time, we know that um, there will be some best practices that we think we can bring for it. Um, and so that is one of the recommendations we hope to come, maybe at our next meeting with you.
Well, thank you very much. And thank you to uh, the entire advisory committee. Uh, you've put in so much time and so much care and um, and we look forward to continuing to, to actually work on um, these steps with you. And um, please, if you need anything, just call or email. We're all available.
Thank you very much. And uh, we appreciate the time. And we look forward to uh, continuing to work with you, Madam Chair, too. And the rest of the committee.
Thank you. Have a good evening. Take care.
You too.
Good night. Good night, Pat. Thank you.
Our next um, is a report from our Director of Finance, a town accountant, Karen Prouval. Welcome and thank you very much um, for uh, waiting with us.
Thank you, Sir Yucha. Thank you so much for having me um, as part of your agenda this morning. I just wanted to note, and regarding diversity, equity and inclusion, I was on several committees and chaired the um, diversity committee while working with the city of Cambridge for more than ten years. And we did a lot of different outreach with the schools and with the council and with, and with residents, really looking at ways that we can make things more diverse and looking at how things could be more equitable. So, if anybody on the committee has questions, they're looking for resources, they're looking for um, different platforms, I have um, I, I, I have a lot of resources that I'd be willing to share. Um, if anybody wanted to reach out to me, they, they definitely could.
Oh, wonderful, wonderful. Um, well, um, m- maybe Mr. Dennehy could connect you with uh, Ms. Latimore and Mr. Reddick. So, that would be great. They're the co-chairs, so.
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you. That will be great. Yeah, I'll make connections with that and, and just um, make sure that the committee is aware of, of the funding source and, and how to get through the, the process. Uh, it's, it's sometimes, y- you know, you have to work your way through the system with this, but with your chief procurement officer. But, no, that's great and I appreciate that, Karen. Um, thank you for sharing that.
Welcome. Um, for this meeting, I wanted to give a brief update on some of the areas that I've been working on over the last couple of months that I've been with the town of Milton. Um, so just briefly, just go through a summary of some of the things that I, um, we've been doing in our office. The first is just assisting with the preparation of the FY twenty-two budget and the warrant. The third, I've been working with the department heads going over the third quarter budget reviews, looking at expenditures, looking at revenues. So, we've been trying to work and have a collaborative um, group effort just to have a good understanding um, of what departments' needs are, what we, if there are anything unexpected that may be coming up um, at the end of the fiscal year that we're kind of on, in, in the loop of what's happening. Well, I'm also in the process of reviewing internal controls and workflows in terms of how we um, manage our purchasing and payment process. Working on financial policies around procurement for goods and services. And that can consist of, you know, consolidated, consolidations for various services, um, reduction in different chargebacks and just working towards um, making things more automated. After speaking with a lot of departments um, and different staff, automation is definitely something that is an interest. And so, we're, you know, putting an effort into looking at different ways that we can streamline that process. Another area that um, I'm working on is time and attendance and looking at the process of how to automate that. Um, a lot of the work um, in terms of union contracts and how it's recorded is done manually. And so, I'll be setting up different groups, working with departments, setting up different committees, so we can start brainstorming and look- And so I'll be setting up different groups, working with departments, setting up different committees, so we can start brainstorming and looking at different options. I've been in contact with representatives of Softwrite, which is our software um, system that we currently use. And looking up the, seeing if there's different platforms within there that can help address and automate this particular process. There's a lot going on and um, you know, cause it's getting close to the end of the fiscal year. Um, given the process of preparing, preparing the year and closeout, um, looking at closing out purchase orders and rolling things over into the next fiscal year, looking at carryforwards. This week started the first step of the outside auditors from um, Power and Sullivan. So they were in the office today. And everybody within the accounting office is, and, and even other departments, the assessors office and the treasurer's office has done a wonderful job in terms of gathering material um, to provide to them. We've had a list and they were here today for the entire day and they're not coming back. So all of the other, you know, work that they're going to do in terms of auditing, what the town um, is working on will be remote. A lot of the files we've been able to upload, but um, from what they've reported right now, it, it, the, everything looks fine. Um, they haven't seen any red flags, but of course, you know, we'll be working with them throughout the entire process of the audit. And having conversations and, you know, if there's questions that we have in terms of the process of the procedure of how we do things, they're going to be available. So we, you know, had a larger meeting with several department heads, um, just to understand everyone's role. So that was done today. We're um, also in the process of reconciling our CARES Act um, expenditures and revenue. We are in the process of moving into submitting some of our reimbursements. To date for the CARES Act, the um, town has is eligible for $2.4 million. Out of that, we received 1.1. And so there's, you know, a lot of different um, reports that have to be submitted on different expenditures. So those are all due on June. So I'm, you know, constantly working on making sure that um, we hit the deadline in terms of getting that information into the state. In terms of FEMA um, funds, and those are distributed through MEMA. We've spent around $231,000 um, between FY20 and FY21. When um, COVID hit, $78,000 um, will be reimbursed. We've already received the reimbursement contract from um, um, from FEMA. To, so that, those funds will be um, reimbursed to the town within the next, um, probably within the next month or so. We've already submitted two um, two reimbursement requests so far. Um, since the time we met, um, Cherry Street for the budget that was submitted, that um, uh, Mike Dennehy submitted, the governor's budget um, was for estimated receipts was at $4.3 million. Um, the House Committee on Ways and Means met and the new figures came in at $14,404,773. So as you look at the difference between the governor's budget and ways and means, the increase in estimated receipts was told around 42,000. And our estimated assessment charges actually decreased. So the amount of charges that they were charging, um, the town decreased around $20 million. So overall, we were looking at a net increase for Cherry Street um, of $62,000. Currently, right now, I'm still in contact with representatives that are working with um, ARPA. But we haven't received um, any updates on the federal, um, you know, government um, standards on um, how much we're going to be getting or, you know, what those funds can be used from. So we'll keep you posted, um, the more, you know, as I hear, um, more information on that, I'll, you know, can let you know when we'll get those funds and um, what is, what we will be to use those funds for.
Thank you so much. Uh, Mr. Dennehy?
Yeah, I, I, I just want to thank Karen. Um, she literally uh, dove into Milton Town Government uh, in, into the deep end. Um, she's met with every single department head. Um, she, she's literally on top of 50 different things. I wouldn't even want to try to schedule her week for her. Um, uh, recently re-elected uh, select board member Zulus and I are in the building today and we, we bumped into Craig Peacock, who is the Powers and Sullivan, uh, the town's auditor's um, supervisor. And was thoroughly impressed with Ms. Preval. So I just want to, just want to thank her for the first uh, quarter with the town. Um, she's really taking on everything and she's changing some of the ways we're doing business. Um, very, very personal, uh, interacting with all our department heads, getting to know uh, their budgets, um, and, and the ins and outs, what they're looking for next year, what they may be turning back this year, and just really understanding um, how, how their department functions, which, which is the essence of, of operations and then, and then preparing budgets. So I can't thank her enough for that, all her work to get the town meeting warrant to where it is for next Monday night, um, and everything she's been doing. So before this board uh, asks any questions or, or uh, makes any comments, I just want to, I want to thank Karen for literally uh, a wonderful first quarter uh, with the town of Milton.
Thank you so much, Mr. Dennehy. Um, yes, I, I, I have to, I have to echo that. I'm just so excited to have um, your considerable experience and skills and, and your, your astuteness. I was, uh, it was a pleasure um, to, to um, be in, on, on the interviews. And I'm just so excited that you decided to take a chance on us. Um, and I can't believe you've only been here a quarter. It feels like a year. I don't know about you.
Oh, I thought.
We've been there a lot. Um, would, would any other board members care to ask a question or make a comment?
I want to let her go home. She's worked already like 20 hours today.
Ms. Conlon?
Madam Chair, I, I echo all those comments that you and Mr. Dennehy made, but I wanted to just report that the finance committee is going to meet on Friday morning and we're going to talk about um, any adjustments to the budget at town meeting that we can present to our board on Monday night before town meeting and possibly to other boards. So uh, we're looking forward to that. And, and I, and Karen, I was delighted to hear you're looking at automating the time and attendance, because I know that that is a real nightmare for people to, to deal with. So that, that would be wonderful to be able to automate that. So just keep on doing what you're doing, because it sounds like you've got a million things going all at once and uh, a lot of important projects that you're working on. Thank you for everything.
Welcome. Thank you so much.
All right. Well, I, I think we'd better honor Richard's wish and, and say thank you again and um, and safe travels getting home and have a good evening. So.
Thank you, Sir Yud. Thank you so much. And I, you know, I just thank all of the department heads and my staff, because I wouldn't have been able to do any of this. Welcome. Cause they've been, they're wonderful.
Oh, well, thank you. Yes. Please, please thank your staff as well.
I will. Thank you very much. Have a good night.
Good night, Karen. Thank you.
Good night, Karen.
Thank you.
Bye.
Um, item number eight is consideration of Seaport Economic Council Grant Program Application for Dredging and Vote to Allow the Town Administrator to Sign and Submit on the Behalf of the Town of Milton. And I believe we have Ms. Quinn, our Assistant Planner with us. Here she is. Good evening and welcome.
Good evening.
Hi, sorry, go ahead.
Uh, good evening, uh, good evening, Melinda and members of the board. Thank you for letting me come back again about dredging. Uh, I, I know I was there uh, a month ago and at that time, we had decided that we would not be pursuing the state dredging application. Subsequently, we have gotten some feedback for a letter of interest we submitted to the Community One Stop for Growth Grant Application that indicated that we should pursue a different dredging grant. And that one is called the Seaport Economic Council Grant Program. Uh, this one's a little less encumbersome, because they will allow uh, some grant funding to be used towards design and permitting. So the deadline for this grant, we, we've got all, it almost complete. Um, Child's Engineering is filling out a few last-minute things that we need from them. I had the opportunity to sit with Member Wells today to get the historical feedback um, about that site that we needed. I've completed my portion. Marina Fernandez, the town engineer, has also been very supportive and helpful. And we feel that we will have this ready to go. If it is not ready for the grant deadline for this round, which is May 1st, we will certainly have it ready for the November 1st deadline. So that's, that's where we're at. That's why I'm here. I wanted to let you know where we were, where we were at, that we were able to identify an alternate path to pursue uh, dredging in Milton Landing. And hope that you would support um, a vote to allow the town administrators to submit the grant on behalf of the town.
Thank you. Um, do members have any questions or comments? I know we haven't seen a copy of the grant application, so.
You haven't. I, I didn't want to, I was waiting. I really wanted to wait until I got the feedback from Childs. I'm not in, in here, and I don't really understand all of, all of those pieces. And I felt it was, you know, it, it would have probably given more questions than answers at that point. I will submit a copy to you tomorrow when I get that feedback from them.
Okay, understood. Um, so, but this needs to be signed in short order. Is that my understanding?
Correct. So the town administrator would, would sign off on it and submit it. Um, if it is not ready for, for the May 1st deadline, then we simply just wait till November, if you guys want to have a chance to look at it. You know, I just wanted to make you a, aware of the fact that it was out there and that we were going to try and chase it.
Right. Thank you. Um, Mr. Wells?
Thank you, Madam Chair. And thank you again, Allison, for all you've done on this. I did talk with Margaret Wilfaris from the state after our meeting today, who strongly suggests that we do file now, because we, we haven't applied. We haven't done anything since 1983. And um, as you know, Allison, it's very strong that we want to get on their radar. And even in, if we're going to get funded on this one, we very likely may get funded for the next one. So I think that for our, for my colleagues here, I think I would strongly urge all of us that this is something we should support tonight. This is um, something that is so needed to make this jewel of our community. Mr. Dennehy and I spent an hour down there this morning again. And it, it's amazing how each and every day, the people we run into who are really starting to take notice and wanting to use this area of our community. So, and actually, Michael and I were there today at Deadlaw. I took him on a little walk, he told to show him a couple of points that he, that was not aware of. And when you're there at Deadlaw, it clearly, clearly illustrates just how seriously we need to dredge this. So I really hope that we can vote this time. Thank you.
Right. Thank you. Yeah. I mean, I, I, I think um, Ms. Quinn has outlined a really thorough process and um, town staff have um, been preparing it as well as our, our consultants. So um, if, I, I mean, to me, if Mr. Dennehy is, is satisfied with the application, I'm, I'm happy to have him sign it. I, I don't know how other members of the board feel. Ms. Conlon?
Madam Chair, normally we'd like to see the application, but based on the urgency here and I, and the statements that we've heard from Assistant Town Planner Quinn and Mr. Wells, I'll, I'll move that we approve an application for grants to the Seaport Economic Council Grant Program for dredging and that we authorize the town administrator to sign the application and submit it on behalf of the town of Milton.
Second.
Thank you. All those in favor, Ms. Conlon?
Yes.
Mr. Doyle?
Yes.
Mr. Wells?
Oh, no, absolutely.
Mr. Zulus?
Yes.
Ms. Conlon, yes. Thank you. Well, thank you, Ms. Quinn, for um, joining us and uh, and for preparing this application. And uh, thank, thank you, Mr. Wells, for helping with this.
Oh, I, I thank her for her vision. This woman has vision. I'm a big proponent of vision. Thanks, Allison.
Of course. I think Margaret's more afraid that you're going to see me out there with a shovel soon.
I'll, I'll take it.
Have a good night. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Have a good night. Um, okay, so our, our, um, as, as Mr. Zulus noted, we have a number of um, a- appointments and um, you know, I, I have to admit that looking through the Historic District Study Committee, um, you know, the applications and, I mean, s- some of them, the ones that come from professional organizations, I think that process is um, a, a little different and um, provides more information. But I've been really dissatisfied with our volunteer form for, for quite a while. Um, Mr. Zarwinski created his own nomination form uh, for the Open Space and Recreation Plan. Because he found the volunteer form lacking. And one of his questions was um, have you been on a board or, or committee before? Because he was looking for people who hadn't had prior experience with the town in order to bring in some new voices. Um, so, so uh, i- i- I think it's a, it's a pretty widely-held um, idea that, that we can improve upon it. And so, given that we're to the Historic District Study Committee nominees, um, it seems as if uh, as if we may want to take a step back and um, send the press release that we had given to the Milton Times, uh, a- along with, actually, I've, I followed up with people with a more detailed um, email, so I can also provide that information. Uh, and I think that's, I think that's what I was hearing. We, we might like to do um, uh, with uh, with the Historic District Study Committee. I don't know if other people are looking to ask um, our town planner to um, go back, because we have a slate from him of um, but uh, if, we'd like him to also do that and we can help him uh, make those connections. Uh, and are we also talking about um, the other, other appointments? That we have quite a few, so. Yes, Mr. Doyle? Uh, you're muted, Mr. Doyle.
I keep doing that.
That's okay.
My daughter's cat is here snoring, so I don't want to hear it from him.
Well, if you can't hear the airplanes going over my house, I'm sure we can hear your cat.
Yeah. The notion of going back to the old times is valuable, but let's recap a little bit of what we discussed earlier this evening and think about going to MICA and other outlets as well.
Mr. Zulus, you look as if you're ready to speak.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. I think the suggestion was if we get a one-page sheet, sheet with uh, with Historic Study, Historic District, Historic District Study Committee, uh, uh, Open Space Planning Committee, um, Milton Village Central Avenue Revitalization Committee and Animal Shelter Advisory Committee, one-page sheet listing those four committees and uh, you know, distribute that to the churches and, and, and through the Equity and Justice Committee. Um, you know, maybe with a, maybe a short, you know, listing each committee with a short one sentence, this is what this committee is about. I think that's what, what uh, they were suggesting.
So, when, one thing about, I, I do have a question about, say, the Animal Shelter Advisory Committee. Is, that's not the Building Committee. Is that correct?
It's, it's the Everything Committee. It is.
Yeah.
It is.
It's the Everything Committee. So I think, I think I might want to speak with them first, only because they're in the middle of a
well, actually, they haven't quite, I guess, begun. But uh, uh, should, should, do, do we think we should speak with them just because they've been, they're continuing this process? Is that, I, 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 I just, um, yes, Mr. Wells?
I would, just given how close they are, that's one committee right now. I would leave that committee alone. I mean, that's a building committee. They're three years into their work. I, I wouldn't want to, I'd let them just keep going. Um, because I would say, once they get to construction, which we expect shortly, the plan is out. They've already gone out. They've got their OPM. I, I wouldn't, I, I wouldn't, um, I think we should just omit that one and then look at all the others for tonight.
Okay.
Madam Chair, I have a suggestion.
Yes, Ms. Conlon?
On that, I, I am in agreement with Richard at the point that I think it's important that the members who are on that, who have the historical knowledge, it's important to reappoint them. This is a committee that we created several years ago. We could expand the membership if we want. So if there's somebody out there who might like to serve on this committee, has some good experience, we could add that person. We just need to expand the charge. So I would not- So I would not, you know, I would keep that one in the mix that we want to seek some applications.
Okay.
But I, I wouldn't, you know, these four just happen to be on for tonight. I think there's probably several others coming up soon, so if we can include those as well, I think that would be.
Right. That's a great idea. So why don't, why don't I work with Jennifer McCullough to, to, to get, to get a more comprehensive list and then forward that along with some descriptions? Does that sound good?
That would be great.
Okay. I, I, I will connect with Mr. Zerwinski since he thought he had finalized this committee that he'd been working on for a while. And, and just, I, I think maybe that one, we might want them to, to move on a little more quickly if, if we could, just because that, that, uh, this group's work has some implications for other planning that's being done. So, that's, okay. All right, so I, I'm, we then, I guess, are deferring nine appointment to the Historic District Study Committee. And although I have a follow-up question, because I really, I really would like to have more information on our, on our application and I'm wondering how, how the board would like to work on amending that application so that it's more effective. But, but at any rate, so it's, we're deferring nine, the Historic District Study Committee, the Open Space Planning Committee, that's number ten. Number twelve, the Milton Village Central Avenue Revitalization Committee, and number thirteen, well, I think we're going to reappoint these tonight, but then include that, that committee for possible expansion. So, so let's take eleven, the reappointment of Arthur Doyle to the Conservation Commission.
I'll make a motion to reappoint Arthur Doyle to the Conservation Commission.
With the term expiring May thirty-first, twenty twenty-four.
I'm sorry, I didn't see that yet. Would the term expire May thirty-first, twenty-four? Sorry. I was reading the bold, not, not the, uh.
I, I, I do that too.
Second.
Thank you. All those in favor, Ms. Conlon?
Yes.
Mr. Doyle?
Of state.
Thank you. Mr. Wells?
Yes.
Mr. Zulis?
Yes.
Ms. Conlon, yes. Thank you. And then item number thirteen. I moved to reappoint, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
Daniel Daley, Therese Desmond, Dennis Kane, William Ritchie, John Sheldon, Alyssa Cook, and Kathy Henderson to the Animal Shelter Advisory Committee with terms expiring April thirtieth, twenty twenty-two.
I think you missed George Tagas. Did you say?
Oh, I did. Oh, I'm so sorry. No, George Tagas. As well. Thank you for the, uh, the friendly amendment. Oh, he's not, you know what? He's not down below. He's just in the bold.
Okay.
If I may, his appointment has not yet expired.
Ah. Okay. Thank you. All those in favor, Ms. Conlon?
Yes.
Mr. Doyle?
Yes.
Mr. Wells?
Yes.
Mr. Zulis?
Yes.
Ms. Conlon, yes. Thank you. So it's nine o'clock. Discussion, annual town meeting, warrant articles. Uh, the idea was to take a position on these articles. I'm, I don't know that we need to do them all tonight. I, I will say that the, the fill bylaw, the earth materials sorry, sorry, removal and deposit of fill bylaw amendment seems to have sort of hit a roadblock. It was taken up in warrant committee because a, a possible change to the warrant article was presented by Mr. Zerwinski. And the warrant committee has decided to pull its recommendation and refer it back to the planning board. So just to let people know, I, I, I watched the meeting and so originally I thought we would, we would, um, we would vote on it, but after watching that, probably not a good idea. Ms. Conlon?
I, I watched the warrant committee meeting as well, and I'm still inclined to support the planning board on this article. So I don't know whether the planning board's gonna take it back up at, at their meeting right before town meeting, but I, I was not persuaded by the discussion of the warrant committee. It sounded as though people thought there was just a change and it wasn't ready and let's just do it all at once. I thought, Tim, advance the right explanation that there's a reason for this. And, and we've got multiple developments in town where this could be an issue. So I don't really feel that it was fully vetted by the warrant committee and I, I think our board should support the planning board, you know, if, if that's the sense of the majority and we should not not, not take a position just because of the warrant committee wanting to send it back for the study.
Um, well, they, I, I, I'm inclined to support the planning board's change. The, the article that's in the warrant is not what they would like to bring forward and anymore. And I, I was, it's very compelling. We need trees protected now. So I, I agree with you on that. I thought it made sense. It made sense to me. And, but, but so, I guess we'll just start at the top and then go down. I just had wanted to mention that. So thirty-seven, Home Rule Petition, amend an act relative to the town administrator in the town of Milton, Chapter sixty-five of Acts of twenty sixteen. Will we support this?
I hope so.
Support. I'll move, I'll move to support Article thirty-seven.
Second.
Second. Thank you. All those in favor, Ms. Conlon?
Yes.
Mr. Doyle?
Yes.
Mr. Wells?
I don't usually hear Katie say something like, "Hope so." That scared me for a minute. Yes.
Mr. Zulis?
Yes.
Ms. Conlon, yes. Excellent. Yes, I should hope you are gonna support it. Number thirty-eight, authorize the select board to acquire property. I move to support this.
Second. Second.
Madam Chair, is this, is this the, is this the saying, "I get this property for the fire station?"
Yes.
That's what this one is. Okay. I, I need to be recused on that because it's a bonding article.
Thank you for reminding me. Now, okay.
Second.
Yes, you did. Mr. Doyle?
Yes.
Mr. Wells?
Yes.
Mr. Zulis?
Yes.
Ms. Conlon, yes. Okay, thank you. And we can wait for Ms. Conlon to come back. There you are. Thank you. Number thirty-nine, Home Rule Petition, Raise Income Threshold for Seniors, Real Estate Property Tax Defirmance.
I'll move to support Article thirty-nine.
Second.
Thank you. All those in favor, Ms. Conlon?
Yes.
Mr. Doyle?
Yes.
Mr. Wells?
Yes.
Mr. Zulis?
Yes.
Ms. Conlon, yes. Excellent. Number forty, to reduce the interest rate for senior real estate property tax deferments.
I'll move to support Article forty.
Second.
Thank you. All those in favor, Mr. Doyle?
Yes.
Ms. Conlon?
Yes.
Mr. Wells?
Yes.
Mr. Zulis?
Yes.
Ms. Conlon, yes. Um, okay, so forty-one, amend zoning bylaws section four A, earth materials removal and deposit of fill. So, um, so now my question is, you know, originally I was all set to support the warrant article as presented, and now we have this new development. Um, and the crux of it is that the way it's currently written, it just, it, it would catch too many types of projects that it doesn't necessarily work for. So they wanted to make a change that would capture any kind of project that would just be going before the planning board for approval and to the ZBA for approval. So I'm not exactly sure what we, what we would like to vote on to support it. Because I, I, I don't know that we're going to see a green sheet on this, on the change. We may see a, a, a change on town floor and, uh, on the floor of town meeting. And I'm so glad Mr. Freitag, our town council, has joined, joined us. And perhaps he can tell us if it's within the scope to, for that change to be proposed on town floor.
Madam Chair, just one quick question.
We need to wait for that in order to, to vote on it anyway. Mr. Wells, I'm sorry, go ahead.
So just one quick question. Would you agree that it's probably highly unlikely this goes on the first night and maybe we have a little bit of time in the meeting that we have before the night this goes, we could actually vote whether or not to support it that night?
I think.
You may get, you may get your wish then as well.
I think you're absolutely correct. Uh, Mr. Freitag?
Thank you.
Hello.
Good evening, Madam Chair. Kevin Freitag, Town Council.
So, um, so our, our question is, I mean, we, we can take a position on the warrant article as it's presented in the warrant, but we really, that, that's the only thing that, at this point, that we could actually take a position on. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, so we'll have to wait. So, um, I, I don't know if this is an inappropriate time to, for you to answer the question. Um, I, I, I believe you actually know about the, the proposed change. And I, I'm not sure, could it be proposed on the floor at town meeting?
Yes, I think the sequence would be something like the following. The warrant committee voted to refer this back to the planning board. I spoke with the moderator tonight and went over this a little bit with him. Uh, and it's his understanding that he's gonna try to get that revised recommendation, which is to refer back to the planning board out to town meeting members as soon as possible, so that they understand that there, there is a change from what's in the printed warrant for this article. At town meeting, the new recommendation of the warrant committee will be the first vote on the floor of town meeting. And like any other vote, people can speak in support or in opposition of that motion. If that motion were to pass, then the result, I think, is rather obvious that the, the article goes back. If it were to fail, that would mean that the article would still be in front of town meeting and there would need to be some action taken at that time. At which time, it would seem reasonable that the moderator would seek a motion. And then the town meeting would need to see what that new motion was. Could potentially be the motion that, or a suggestion by a member of town meeting that the town vote in accordance with the recommendation that the planning board was amending, was proposing to the warrant committee earlier this week. That would be, that would be a second motion if that first motion to refer were unsuccessful.
Thank you. Do, do members have any, any more questions or comments on this? Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Freitag. Appreciate it.
You're welcome.
So, um, would, would somebody like to make a motion on, on this? Yes, Mr. Zulis?
Madam Chair, I, I'd actually be a little more comfortable, perhaps, waiting before town meeting. Before we, before taking a position. I'd like to know a little bit more about this and about what the potential change is gonna be.
I agree.
Thank you. Uh, number forty-two, amend zoning bylaws, section four C, floodplain district boundaries and base flood elevation date.
I move to support, Madam Chair.
Second. All those in favor, Mr. Doyle?
Yes.
Mr., Ms. Conlon?
Yes.
Mr. Wells?
Yes.
Mr. Zulis?
Yes.
Ms. Conlon, yes. Okay, thank you. Um, number forty-three, amend zoning bylaws, section three, accessory dwelling units.
Madam Chair, I, I, my preference would be to wait on this piece. I think there's gonna be a lot of discussion on this article at town meeting. I, I think we need to amend the accessory dwelling unit bylaw that currently exists, but I'm not sure I support all of the changes that are recommended in this article. And I think it's an ambitious approach. I, I always prefer to take an action where you can try to have broad support for something and take incremental steps to get to where we need to be. And I think there may be some changes that need to be made to this recommendation. So that, that's just my personal view. I, if the board wants to vote on it, I'm gonna abstain on it tonight.
I agree with that.
I do too.
Okay, well, I, I support it as it is, but I'm, I'm certainly willing to wait if, if the majority seems to want to see what, what unfolds. Okay.
Excuse me, Madam Chair?
Yes, Mr. Doyle?
I'm, I'm wondering what we're waiting for. A town meeting can move in any direction it wants to on the article. It does not appear that this is going back. We have a warrant committee recommendation. There's no sense this is going back to the planning board or that there will be a grant, green sheet.
Well, it could be referred back from the floor of town meeting.
Right, but.
Possible, but.
Sure, exactly. They can go any direction they want to go, but why would we not take a position in advance of town meeting?
Well, I mean, we can vote and people who would like to abstain can, can do that if that's.
So I'll, I'll move the article.
If, if, if I may?
Yes, Mr. Zulis.
Arthur, my, my thought, I, I just want to look into it a little more. I'm, I'm happy to vote, take a position on our meeting on Monday night. Uh, but I haven't fully come to ground on this. So.
Okay, I can, I can go with that.
Yeah, so I'm happy to vote. I'm happy to take a position before town meeting. I just would like, like a little more time.
That's, that's exactly where I am, so I will draw.
Okay.
I, I agree. And, and I, I, I'm sorry, I did, go ahead, Melinda.
No, that's okay, Katie. Go ahead.
I, I did watch the warrant committee discussion on this article and there was, it was a very short discussion. There's a lot in this article, so I, I, I want to spend a little more time on it myself and I, I suspect I'm for, I'm in favor of some of it and perhaps not all of it. So I'd like a little more time as well.
Madam Chair, just, just, just a quick question to Katie. Is, do you think there was a specific reason why the warrant committee's discussion was so short?
You know, the warrant committee spends a lot of time in the budget. Sometimes the zoning articles don't get as much attention because they all come in at the very end, but you know, there's provisions in here that really weren't discussed. And, and maybe the warrant committee members were all fine with it, but it seemed to me that there would have been a lot more questions, given all the discussion the planning board has had. So.
Okay, I haven't, I don't want to take a peek at it. So, and I'm with Arthur. I, I do want to take a position before we go in. My thought in opening this up was just the same thing. Let's do it the night before we know what's gonna go on. So, and if it's Monday night, as Mr. Zulis said.
Right, right. Well, I mean, and if people haven't had a chance to really digest it, it's important to wait until we all have. So I appreciate knowing that. That's, that's also part of it. So forty-four, establishment of a municipal light plant.
No way. I'll make a motion to move Article forty-four.
I'll second.
Thank you. All those, all those in favor, Mr. Doyle?
Three, six, seven.
What'd you say, Arthur? As long as we don't put it?
I said, twins, three, six, seven.
Sorry, Madam Chair, we're getting out of hand here.
That's, that's all right. Um, uh, sorry, I was, I, I, never mind. Um, okay, so all those in favor, Mr. Doyle?
Yes.
Ms. Conlon?
Yes.
Mr. Wells?
Yes.
Mr. Zulis?
Yes.
Ms. Conlon, yes, thank you. Forty-five, amend term of the bylaw review committee. I, I move to.
Support Article forty-five.
Thank you. Second, all those in favor, Mr. Doyle?
Yes.
Ms. Conlon?
Yes.
Mr. Wells?
Yes.
Mr. Zulis? Oh.
You did.
Yep.
Yes.
Ms. Conlon, yes, thank you. So citizens petitions, Article forty-six, exempt seniors from overrides. Uh, we could take, we could take a vote. We can't really accept this because it, it it usurps the state's authority, so we'd have to say no, but, but we could take a formal vote if we like.
I'll move that we support the recommendation of the warrant committee on Article forty-six.
Thank you. Thank you. All those in favor, Mr. Doyle?
Yes.
Ms. Conlon?
Yes.
Mr. Wells?
Yes.
Mr. Zulus?
Yes.
Ms. Collins, yes, thank you. Um, Article forty-seven, citizens petition trash recycling curbside hours, um, may have a motion. Yep, uh, thank you. Um, all those in favor, Mr. Doyle?
Yes.
Did someone second this?
Yes.
Thank you, Ms. Conlon, okay.
Yes.
Uh, Mr. Wells?
Yes.
Mr. Zulus?
Yes.
Ms. Collins, yes. Um, forty-eight, citizens petition amend zoning bylaws, section five C and six A five. This, I suspect, is another one that we may want to, um, have a little more time to digest. Is that, this is the thirty-six units for, um, for, uh, uh, Winter Valley for, um, and I don't know if everyone's had a chance to watch the planning board hearing. I have not, and I think that, to me, is important. I, I'd like to watch that first.
Madam Chair, my understanding is that the warrant committee voted a recommendation on this in advance of the planning board's public hearing, which is highly unusual. I, I prefer to wait for the, to watch the planning board hearing myself, but also to hear what the planning board's recommendation is.
Right.
The planning board is going to vote on a Monday night for town meeting.
Okay.
There, that's what they came.
Right, and then they're, 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 they're required to make a report on the floor, uh, at town meetings, so, um, okay, so we'll, we'll defer that too. Great, thank you, everyone. I really appreciate, um, going through this together. Item fifteen, meeting minutes.
Could we defer the minutes of, of, uh, the fourteenth? I'm fine with the minutes of the twenty-first, but I, I think there's a change on the fourteenth that needs to be made, particularly regarding one sixty-seven Lyman Road.
Thanks.
We could take that Monday night.
Yes.
That will be helpful.
I'll move to approve the minutes of April twenty-first, two thousand twenty-one.
Second.
Um, all those in favor, Mr. Doyle?
Yes.
Ms. Conlon?
Yes.
Mr. Wells, you're muted.
Yes.
Mr. Zulus?
Yes.
Ms. Collins, yes. So, uh, future meeting dates are, our next meeting is on the third, um, at six thirty. And, um, and I, I think we're, we're, I think we're scheduled for six thirty for the following nights as well. Um, so just to let everybody know, sometimes we make, we, we change that to seven. But I believe it's six thirty. Um.
Madam Chair, can I make a suggestion for those meetings? I think we should try to keep the agenda, at least for Monday, Tuesday, and Thursday of the first week, and we'll see if we go into a second week of town meeting, but I think we should keep the agenda, the same items on the agendas, so that if we don't reach everything on Monday night, we can do it on Tuesday without fear that it wasn't on the Tuesday agenda.
Right.
Because I think we're going to need a lot of time on Monday night on the town meeting articles and possibly the other nights, but it would be good if we can get some business done at those meetings, whether it's, even if we have to juggle which night we take it.
Okay, that's fine with me. Uh, other, the people, I like the idea.
So, just, if I think I get this, so Katie, your suggestion would be we create an agenda that goes like for all three nights and we just, other than the town meeting stuff, we work at it as we can over the three nights.
Right, if we conclude something, then, you know, that's fine. So, okay. Thank you. Um, Mr. Dennehy, do you have a report?
Uh, yes, thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board. Uh, very quickly, uh, two, two items. Um, first and foremost, I'd like to thank Clerk Galvin, her staff, and all town employees and volunteers that helped make yesterday, uh, successful twenty twenty-one annual election day. I believe the clerk, uh, unofficially reported almost twenty-five percent turnout, uh, for an annual election, so. Um, secondly, I'd like to thank all the candidates that pulled papers to run for townwide or representative town meeting. Um, and a huge thank you to those that have held office and served the town so diligently through last night. Uh, um, it, it's a huge commitment. Um, and I just want to thank everybody, um, who has spent time on a committee in town uh, that will no longer be serving and those that are, um, and lastly, congratulate all those that were elected last night, including our own Mike Zulus, who'll serve on this board for another three years, so. Uh, I've said it a lot, volunteerism in this town, um, is, uh, it helps this town's, uh, what I believe to be the most democratic process, representative town meeting, and all the volunteer boards and committees and all the elected, um, members. I see, uh, several members of the library trustees who are here this evening, I want to thank them. Uh, both planning board candidates that ran and any other person that pulled papers and, and, uh, wanted to do more for our town, so I want to thank everyone for that. And then lastly, um, we have noticed an uptick in, um, traffic, both volume and speeding. Uh, the complaints are coming in through the town. Uh, Milton Police is ramping up, uh, some of their spot enforcement accordingly. Uh, but I think as we, uh, transcend out of COVID, uh, we're going to see some of the same poor traffic patterns uh, that we saw, uh, and tried to mitigate, uh, with, with the formation of a committee last year, so. Just know that, that the town is, is doing its best to, to, uh, police the speeding. Uh, Chief King will tell you, um, as Mr. Wells knows, it's very hard to police volume. Uh, but speeding and cut through traffic is something that, that is on there, um, daily agenda, so we just want to let everybody know that we, we see it, we understand, and, and we're trying to do the best we can, uh, with that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Dennehy. Um, I, I, I appreciate, uh, everything that you said about people serving in the election, so I won't repeat it because I think the board also shares that, but I, I did want to say, um, welcome back, Mr. Zulus. Um, and, uh, but also to thank Mr. Johanning for running, um, and to encourage people to run i- in, in the future, um, you know, for, for all of these offices, the, the more people who join into, uh, the conversations and, um, the, the better for all of us, so, yeah, we're very glad to have you back. Yes, Mr. Doyle?
If I may, I just wanted to, um, add to, uh, Mr. Dennehy's comment about uh, traffic with another sidestep, and I, I mentioned this to him, um, some time ago, since, since then, I've seen two more instances, so in the last four weeks, there've been uh, six U-turns that I've observed on Adam Street and East Milton Square. Uh, which is not easy, said in the affirmative. You've seen them too. They are really dangerous. Somebody's going to get seriously injured.
Yep. Seen quite a few of those myself, um, Adam, want them. Um, uh, so, uh, Chair's report, uh, actually, uh, Ms. Prival, I've mentioned that guidance isn't coming out till I think about, uh, May tenth. Although Mr. Dennehy and I went, uh, did attend a webinar from the National League of Cities and the Mass Municipal Association, which uh, had a lot of great information, and, um, if you, if you haven't gotten that, we can give you a follow-up. But, um, also, uh, National League of Cities is something to think about joining, uh, at some point in the future. Um, under topics that, uh, the chair did not reasonably anticipate, we, we received, um, an invitation from, um, the Milton Interfaith Clergy Association to, um, partner in, uh, offering the community gathering commemorating our journey through COVID nineteen, the event on May fifteenth that we approved use of the gazebo for. And, um, and so, since we received it yesterday, uh, we had it put on the agenda and, um, would like to see about, uh, whether we could do that. The hospital is also, just so you know, um, joining in on that.
Madam Chair, did you say the fifteenth?
It, May fifteenth, I believe that's the correct date.
So, May fifteenth is National Office of Memorial Day, it's a truly solemn occasion, it's a national memorial day. It's been in place since President Kennedy made it. I just, if you want to think about that, about having it on that date.
Well, we already approved them, I thought. Oh, no, that's the sixteenth, I think, maybe, is it? Yeah, sixteenth, sorry, I had the date wrong. So, thank you, Mr. Wells, though. I really appreciate knowing that. Um.
So, Madam Chair, I'm in favor of partnering with the clergy association and the hospital to, um, to, uh, to ho- to host the program, to host the event on the sixteenth. Because I think it's in line with things that we've done in the past, whether it was the Boston Marathon bombing or the nightclub shooting in Florida several years ago, it's, we've, we've been able over the years to partner with the clergy association to hold events like this, and they're important for the community, and I'm all in favor of it.
Thank you, I appreciate that, they, they, you know, the, the history and knowing that this is a, a board. Um, you know, something that the board has regularly done, and I, I, I would be there anyway, and I think, I, I think we are all very enthusiastic. We know that people need something like this. Um, so. I'll, I'll enter, I'm sorry, did I hear, let's do it?
Let's do it.
So I'll make a motion, I'll make a motion to, uh, partner on this on May sixteenth with the Milton Interfaith Clergy Association and Milton.
I'll second.
All those in favor, Ms. Conlon?
Yes.
Mr. Doyle?
Yes.
Mr. Wells, you're muted.
Sorry, yes, Madam Chair.
Mr. Zulus?
Yes.
Thank you. Mr. Dennehy, um, would you mind reaching out to Reverend, um, and letting him know? Or, or, or I can do it either way.
Yeah, yeah, I'll chat with you in the morning, we can, we can call him.
Thank you. So. Do, do any members have reports, Mr. Doyle?
Not this evening, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Ms. Conlon?
Um, I, just in addition to the comments that were made regarding the election yesterday, I think we should just thank the voters for the ballot question passing. And thank all of the firefighters who supported it, our former chiefs Malcolm Larson and Jack Grant, and Chief Alfanado, who also signed on to letter and support, and everyone who worked very hard. Um, three former employees were the officers of the committee that, uh, that, that really helped pull that together, and they were Chiefs Grant and Larson and Barbara Martin. So I think we owe all of them and Brian Walsh and Dan Clark, uh, everyone who worked very hard, um, a thank you.
Thank you so much. Mr. Wells?
No report, Madam Chair, just one quick question to Mr. Dennehy, just a follow-up. Actually, this is Finance Committee as well. So, back to the police enforcement stuff. Did we wind up cutting the tra- the part-time traffic enforcement, the, the, uh, is he, is he still in our, is he on the, can he come back to work? I know he was laid off, but is he still?
He, he was furloughed, yeah. Uh, we had a quick conversation today. We're going to follow up tomorrow with, with Lieutenant Alba from the Police Department. Um, we're not getting many requests for, um, the business district parking. Um, like, uh, in the time that you and I were down at the landing today, most of those spots in the municipal lot were empty. Um, the, the T lot, I, I, we were on a call earlier today. Um, I, I've seen three or four people cars in that lot consistently lately. It seems like people are starting to use the T down there a little more. Um, I do appreciate those that are, that are using the service zone parking as well. But, uh, follow-up conversation tomorrow, there has been some spot enforcement, um, you know, a- as you know, chief. You'll get calls from, um, a neighbor about a, a car that's parked overnight. Um, uh, obviously during COVID with, uh, most people home and college students not on campus, but rather at home, the town was, was, um, very reactive with that. We weren't really out there, uh, positively enforcing on-street parking, understanding that, um, most homes have too many cars to fit in the driveway. Um, but that's something we're going to take a look at. Um, we, uh, I, I don't know, I'll ask this board if, if they've heard, heard any complaints or anything about, uh, enforcement. Uh, obviously, uh, Franklin Street and some of the areas where the delivery trucks are, um, is probably the most constant theme. Um, but, uh, but, you know, it's a conversation we're going to have tomorrow with Lieutenant Alba. See, uh, if, if and when we bring the parking enforcement officer back a- as the world starts to reopen.
Yeah, as you saw today, uh, Mastard reported today that on this day a year ago, uh, traffic volume was down by sixty-two percent across the Commonwealth. Today, it was only down by ten, a year later.
Yeah, and, and, and to that point, and I, and I don't want to go too deep into this, but if you remember the, the ride-share initiative that, uh, the Baker-Polito administration sponsored, uh, in two thousand eighteen, um, twenty cents out of every ride-share, um, that originates. Uh, they collect that from the ride-share companies. Uh, ten cents or half of that, uh, is given back to the communities for, uh, traffic-related, um, improvements. Um, we received, the town received, uh, a little over, uh, twenty-one thousand seven hundred dollars uh, as two hundred and seventeen thousand, seven hundred and seventy-six, uh, ride-share rides originated in Milton and in calendar year twenty nineteen, so we need to spend that money. Um, with COVID, we, we didn't really go out and invest, but we do have to spend that money by the end of the fiscal year, so we will be, uh, purchasing some more, uh, radar speed monitors, uh, and pedestrian and, um, stop signs, the solar-powered flashing ones. Um, but we don't anticipate, uh, with COVID having shut down most of twenty twenty, seeing, um, anywhere near that, that amount of ride-share money coming in, but just know that, um, uh, improvements and, and infrastructure to try to help with, uh, mitigate some of that stuff. I should have mentioned it as a part of, of, of my, uh, of my D A report, but since you brought it up, uh, that's coming as well.
Hey, thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair, that's it.
Thank you. Uh, Mr. Zulus, Chair for the report?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. Uh, I do want to specifically recognize the efforts uh, of a few, uh, former elected officials. Uh, one is, um, the, uh, library trustee for the last three years, Chiara Franco Lucci, and her efforts on behalf of the library. And two, um, uh, for the first time tonight in six years, um, Sheila Varela and Dr. Kevin Donahue are not members of the school committee. And while we celebrate the new members of the school committee, I think it's important to recognize the efforts and the contribution that Sheila and Kevin made over the last six years. Um, I was fortunate enough to be chair of the school committee uh, during Sheila and Kevin's first year, and so I know firsthand of the contributions and the efforts they made that year and, uh, that they made during the suc- the succeeding five years. So I think it's important to recognize uh, all of their efforts in the last, uh, six years and, uh, perhaps a well-deserved break, but, uh, but they'll, but they'll be, they'll be back and they'll be contributing, and, uh, we'll look forward to that in the future.
We'll see them at town meeting, right? They're still town meeting members.
Exactly right.
Um, thank you. Mr. Wells, did I pass over you for a report?
Fine, Madam Chair, I just had that question, Mr. Dennehy, thank you very much. Katie, we won't see town, we don't get to see yet, we have to wait till the fall before we could see again, I think.
That's true, that's true, we won't see them, but they'll be there.
Right. Um, all right, at this point, um, I'd like to recess to, um.
Madam Chair, if I may?
Yes.
Item, uh, twenty-one, future agenda items. Uh, this is just something that, just something that came up, uh, if, if we're, if we're.
No, we can, we can go to that. No one ever has one, so I thought I'd try to move things along, so, so, so I'm glad you interrupted me.
Yeah, um.
That's good.
This just came up in the last, uh, day or two, it was an email, uh, that, uh, that, uh, we all received about the, um, Adam Street Trolley Stop. And, uh, the peers, it appears to be the delays, the MBTA to fix the stairs. Um, you know, when there's a, when there's a blight that affects your property, and it's a blight that cau- that's caused by a third party. And that third party is not going to take any action to fix that blight in the near future. And sometimes you need to take action, so I, I think we need to put that on our agenda and talk about, uh, how we deal with the blight, uh, that, uh, caused by the MBTA that is affecting Milton.
Um, we, we can do that. Uh, Rep. Colaney and Driscoll tried to address this for us, um, I, I think. Maybe not in twenty twenty, it may have been twenty nineteen, um, and we were told we'd have to wait for the rollout of the, the, the big, the big program. So, if we could do something before then, I'd be so happy.
Sometimes when you're told you have to wait, then you have to go to a third party.
I'd be really happy to, if we. I'd be really happy if we could do something about this, because it's, it's just, you know, it's that whole perfect is the enemy of the good. Um, and, uh, and, and we need something that works for people. Um, so, great. Um, at this time, um, I moved to recess the meeting of the Select Board to call to order a meeting of the trustees of the Governor Stoughton Fund. And, um, we have, um, a guest. Um, do I, uh, do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. All those in favor, Mr. Doyle?
Yes.
Ms. Conlon?
Yes.
Mr. Wells?
Yes.
Mr. Zulus?
Yes.
Ms. Collins, yes. And we have Noreen Dawn, who is the Fund Coordinator for the Milton Residence Fund. Thank you so much for joining us at 9:33 in the evening, after a long day of work.
Starting to nod off, but I didn't want to miss my opportunity.
We, we, we do, we do this to everyone. Um, so, uh, we, we, we always appreciate everybody who hangs in there with us.
No worries. My lighting makes me look very blue here. Um, so, yes, I just wanted to give a, a very brief update. Um, no requests at the, at the current time for you all. Um, so I was just kind of looking at my numbers. I was looking at my profit and loss statement from 2020. Um, and it looked like from the Governor Stoughton Trust, we distributed, um, 77,000 in the calendar year 2020, um, from the Governor Stoughton Trust through the Milton Residence Fund. Um, clearly, you all had given gifts of $75,000 grant and a $35,000 grant for additional for COVID. And that was spent at the end of 2019 into 2020. So the full 110 was spent. And the current gift of 80,000, the current grant, um, we are kind of working on spending through, so I want to give an update on that. Um, so, in calendar year 2021, so starting in January, I looked at the four-month period, um, kind of through, through April here. Um, so, the Milton Residence Fund has distributed 51,874, so a little more than 51,000, um, as 62 separate gifts to Milton families and individuals. So it's slightly higher than the 48,000 that was spent this time period last year, but in the same ballpark, so not wildly different. And I do think that plays a lot to the emergency order, and the kind of moratorium on eviction, and the, um, kind of prevention of shut-off notices at the utility companies. Usually that's more consistent through the year. Um, so the average monthly distribution is about 13,000 a month of requests from Milton residents. So, not a crazy amount, but, uh, you know, a decent number to, to help, um, mostly with utilities, um, and different housing gifts. Um, so, like, eight gifts were given in January, 17 in February, 19 in March, 20 in April. So it's starting to climb a little bit, but it's still in line with previous years. I kept kind of thinking we'd get some wild COVID kind of rush, but like I said, the eviction notices and shut-off notices weren't coming out. Um, most of the gifts were given in the, you know, the same general utility, housing, winter heating oil. Milton residents were still able to access QCAP and the Official Fuel Assistance Program in Quincy that covers Milton residents. Um, but that usually covers one to two tanks of oil, and then, um, folks would get another one to two tanks of oil through the Milton Residence Fund to stretch for, to cover the whole winter. Um, so, looking at, um, camp this year, we had eight, um, children request, whose parents requested assistance for the Park and Rec Camp. Um, it was $700 per youth, um, and that included all the field trips and things, so they had rolled it in, which was nice. Um, and then I'll pursue, um, pool tags through the, the Cunningham Foundation. Um, but so, using Governor Stoughton money, I enrolled those eight kids in camp. Um, so, and that was within the 80,000, so we didn't need a separate ask. Um, and looking back a little previous to that, just so you all know, from the holiday program this year, there was, um, let's see, 101 Milton families asked for help, um, during the December holidays for, um, Christmas gifts, or just plain, like, sneakers for their kids, or clothes for their kids. We had a lot more requests for shoes than, than normal, that the kids just didn't have proper, proper sneakers or winter boots. Um, so I had a great outpouring from the community. So, through the Milton Neighbors Facebook page and, and other means, kind of connected each family need to a donor in town, or just general gifts that were given. Um, so I didn't necessarily use the Governor Stoughton funds for any gifts, just to kind of update you on the, on the community giving. Um, we had 116 adults and 200 children that received, um, gifts through the, the holiday program. Um, and that was obviously in conjunction with the Milton PTO, which was super active, um, and the Family Liaison, um, Marty McKenna O'Keefe for the Public Schools, who's fantastic, and the Milton Community Food Pantry. Um, so, we had a great kind of end of 2020 and, and a lot of help that way. Um, and just so you all know, we got about 35,000 in donations from Milton individuals, just community members in different churches in town, or different groups in town. Um, so it was a much bigger number than normal. So in addition to your gifts from the Governor Stoughton, we had enough to provide, I think it was about, I want to say 215,000 in total was given out in calendar year 2020, a majority of that being Governor Stoughton. So it, it still remains a huge, uh, you know, part of it, huge impact for the town. And looking at kind of spending to date total, um, you know, it, it looks about the same, um, that we'd have funds from the different sources to be able to distribute about 205,000 for this calendar year 2021. The thing to note is the emergency order is going away in July, as far as I know, unless anything changes. So in my conversations with Eversource and National Grid, they expect that all, um, shut-off notices will start flowing out in July. Um, so, so the Eversource person that I talked to was like, oh, yep, they're just gonna come flooding out in July. You know, we're, we're like lining them up to issue out. So I said, you know, okay. Um, so I'm thinking you'll be kind of quiet, and then, you know, mid-July into August, be a lot of, um, families and individuals in Milton, um, that will, will get shut-off notices. Um, and they'll need anywhere from 25% to 50% kind of down payment on their bill. And some families just haven't been able to make payments towards utilities if, if, you know, their unemployment ended, or they haven't resumed employment. So, we'll see, um, what kind of needs we'll spend from that. And I'll try to cut this short. So, um, as of today, we still have 57,000 of the Governor Stoughton funds still remaining in the Milton Residence Fund. I've distributed 23,000 of that. So, I still feel good about what we have at the moment. Um, I have 12,000 remaining of the Copeland Family Foundation, so together, um, what is that, you know, about 70,000 of funds? And we'll see if July is a huge influx of, of eviction notices or utility requests that could easily take up those funds. But, um, you've always been gracious to, you know, receive, uh, requests if, if the need arises, so. Are there any questions, uh, before I go on?
Thank you. Mr. Doyle?
Thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you, Noreen. Um, I apologize for my lack of information in advance on this, but I was wondering if you could just review the mechanisms that might be in place whereby the community knows that it can donate to the Governor Stoughton Fund.
That, yeah, um, it's a good question. So, people would donate to the Milton Residence Fund, not the Governor Stoughton, but it's a really good point in terms of, um, getting the word out. I, I mean, yeah, I sort of welcome all opportunities to talk at the Select Board, because usually, you know, the Milton Times has been very gracious to, to, you know, include updates. Um, they've just recently, the Milton Times, just kind of pro bono put an ad in the paper, you know, noting the Milton Residence Fund as a resource. You know, I, um, placed an ad around the holidays thanking community donors and, you know, stating that we continue to welcome any donations. Um, at the holidays, the Milton Neighbors Facebook page is, is very active. Um, so I tend to post any needs for clothing or shoes, and then that kind of word gets around any other donations. Um, so, if there are other ideas to kind of spread the word for donations, I'm definitely open to it. I know, I do talk to, usually, um, every year, I, I talk to the Quanis, um, the Milton Quanis. You know, I usually do it in person with them, or different groups around town, or talk to community groups. Um, so it's kind of like a sleepy fund, but I try to get the word out and, and spread the message that, you know, anyone can donate. We'd love donations, and anyone can apply, and we can review on a case-by-case basis to see what the needs are.
Thank you, Noreen.
Thank you. Um, yes, Ms. Conlon?
Um, thank you. Noreen, I, I think you've done a great job managing the resources that the Governor Stone trustees have provided to the Residence Fund in the last year. As we went through the pandemic, I, I just want to point out, um, the, the Residence Fund and the Food Pantry, at least in recent years, have been the major beneficiaries of the Governor Stoughton Trust. And these are extraordinary times. It's going to continue for a while, even as we come out of the pandemic. There will be people who are dealing with employment issues and, um, and the, the long-term effect of having been furloughed or unemployed for a while. So, you know, I, I appreciate the conservative management of the money. I'm glad to hear you still have 57,000 from the Governor Stoughton left. But, you know, as, as you are dealing with these utility issues over the summer, and the shut-offs start happening, and residents may have a need, um, please do come back to us if there's something more that we can do. Uh, we've, we've been managing the Governor Stoughton Funds conservatively, I would say, since, since we had the large influx after the property was sold to Polte Homes. Um, we didn't have the flexibility before that, but we have a little more flexibility now. And I think that you should just be aware that the, there are resources available to deal with these extraordinary times as necessary, so.
Yes, thank you. I really appreciate it. Yeah, I mean, we'll see. A, a lot of times, like, utilities, say, you know, someone could owe 3, 4,000, and they're requiring, you know, 2,000 down, and then a payment plan, of which the family, you know, they're gonna have a really hard time. So, it's trying to balance, like, how much, you know, can we pay for each family? How much can we assist, um, to, to make it equitable? But I'm certainly not, like, hoarding the money. Like, I want to get it out there. I want to help people. So, um, you know, for the most part, we are able to assist in some way, you know, for, for most everyone that applies. Um, so, yeah, I'll, I'm hoping, you know, people know that we're here and that, that they can reach out as needed.
Thank you. Um, does anyone else have a question, or?
Let this poor woman go home to bed.
I know.
She has, she has more important work to do tomorrow.
Well, tha- thank you so much, um, Ms. Dolan. I, 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 um, have to echo what Ms. Conlon said. Um, you're, you're just doing a wonderful job, and, um, and I really appreciate your caring presence, you know, that you bring to, to, uh, to everyone, especially at this time, but, but always, and, uh, and we are here to help. And anytime you would just like to send us something, you know, even just a, a, a written, or an indication of how things are going, if you're, because I, I think from our conversation, you're trying to track this, so that you're not completely surprised when Ju- July rolls around. So, and we've, we've been talking about that, and, um, and if you see other, other trends or things that you'd like us to, to know about, please just reach out.
Sure, yes, thank you. Yeah, I track all the different demographics and ages, and the children that have served, and, you know, veterans, and so if there's any different way you ever want to see data presented, I, I can do that as well.
Okay. Well, thank you very much.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you. Have a good night.
Have a good night.
Night.
Thank you.
Um, it says approval of meeting minutes for Governor Stoughton, but I don't think we have any, so, um, unless I missed them.
We have January 27th, 2021, Madam Chair.
We do.
And I'm happy to move approval if the board wants to act on them tonight.
Second.
Um, I feel slightly unprepared, because I read through all the meeting minutes, but I didn't remember that. But, what's the date? Sorry. If it, if I have it and I checked it off, then I'll see.
January 27th.
Thank you. Okay. It just got into the middle of my other stack. Um, all those in favor, Mr. Doyle?
Yes.
Ms. Conlon?
Yes.
Mr. Zulus?
Yes.
Mr. Wells?
Yes.
Ms. Conlon, yes, okay. Thank you very much.
And I'll make a motion, Madam Chair, to adjourn the meeting of the trustees of the Governor Stoughton Fund, and reconvene the Select Board.
Second.
Um, all those in favor, Mr. Doyle?
Yes.
Mr., um, Mr. Wells?
Yes.
Ms. Collins?
Yes.
Sorry, Conlon. I called myself. Mr. Zulus?
Yes.
Yes.
It's almost 10 o'clock. It's getting there.
Yeah, I'm, I, I'm flagging. Can you tell? Um, all right.
Mr. Zulus is wearing the glasses now. We're 10 o'clock.
I wish they would make glasses that make you more wide awake. Um, okay. So, at this time, um, thank you, uh, I moved to enter Executive Session to approve meeting minutes pursuant to MGL Chapter 30A, Section 22F, um, and, uh, pursuant to Mass General Laws, Chapter 30A, Section 21, Subsection A, Subsection 6. Um, also to consider the purchase exchange lease or value of real property based on my belief that having such a discussion in open session may have a detrimental effect on the negotiating position of the Select Board, specifically with, um, respect to 101 Blue Hills Parkway and 432 Adam Street. And also, uh, pursuant to Mass General Laws, Chapter 30A, Section 21, Subsection A, Subsection 3, to discuss strategy with respect to litigation based on my belief that having such discussion in open session may have a detrimental effect on the litigating position of the Select Board, specifically with respect to the town of Milton versus Keith P. Martin Norfolk Superior Court Docket Number, uh, 2082 CV01043, and not to return to open session.
Second.
Um, all those in favor, Mr. Doyle?
Yes.
Ms. Conlon?
Yes.
Mr. Wells?
Yes.
Mr. Zulus?
Yes.
Ms. Collins, yes. And we'll be keeping.